All right, I've been corrected. Somebody correct that clock and I'll try to start on time. Let's call the meeting to order. And Mr. Hewitt, you want to address budget workshop expenses?
We're gonna, we're gonna have Mandy to fly today. She's got a presentation prepared for us.
Welcome, Mandy.
Thank you.
If any of you in, if any of you in the back cannot hear, if you'll raise your hand, we'll make sure that everybody speaks up. Okay.
This is our budget schedule as of today, and we are at a workshop, May fifteenth. The budget is due David, so that will get done into the board as well, so we'll send that out to you on the fifteenth. And this is just the schedule that you guys have seen before already. I'm gonna go through what the easements in each fund, and then after each fund or each department, I have a spreadsheet in the back so we can sort of look over that as we go along so we can like save some time and stay organized. That's okay, you guys? And then this is sort of a document that I put together with the help of the department heads, so if we all have any questions, it might be sort of like a working, sort of a group question and then answer type here, because they know some details about their departments that I don't, all these things that I don't know.
So, we're gonna exchange, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
You're, you're leading, and you're gonna come up and help?
No, we'll just, if you just have questions, we'll all just, you know, answer it, whoever, you know, whatever's best qualified to answer that question.
I have a, I have a request, actually. Could we start with B part, since that's the most inclusive and touches a lot of different areas?
Sure, I mean, if that's, if that's what the board wants to do.
Okay, great, thank you.
Alright, so, in Fund fifty, it is the B part. I was gonna sort of go through all, everybody was gonna look this up, but I know you guys all know what B part is, so. There's a few changes to the expenses this year. Easements for the East End are now included in the Lockwood Folly dredging. One millimeter professional service has increased due to monitoring as related to the permit to the Central Reach project. The beautification has been increased significantly for projects that they have a question, and that, that doesn't include certified plans. And the vegetation expense is placed back in Mr.'s item, budget, it was not there last year.
Yeah, could you call out specifically the easements for the East End when you get to it, please? The budget.
Well, I mean, that was just highlights of that fund that we're changing, so if you'd like to look down on your spreadsheet on page twenty-one, it will show you. Actually, on page twenty-two, it's that way down under the human range to the current, but turn away, so there's a lot of blank space, a little bit of space, and then that next one just on the bottom. Five hundred foley, this is fifty thousand dollars for those two units.
Yeah. I'm not comfortable having a budget item for the easements for Lockwood Folly dredging yet. We don't have a plan, we don't have any agreements. I mean, you talked about it last meeting, Christie, we're really just kind of trying to coordinate with, with other, you know, beaches, so. And I, I asked you, David, you're gonna, you, you had planned on using the same easement that, I don't think, I think we need to look closer at that.
We need to make a distinction what these easements are for. We have a shallow draft inlet five permit already, and the requirement for being able to execute that is we have to have easements to put sand on the beach. What, what is going on with the, the throat of the inlet with that, under the Corps' authorization? We can't exercise our permit now, so.
I understand.
Without the easements, our permit is, is invalid, and so, so in order to be able to execute, whenever we may desire to do that, we have to have the easements.
I, I, I understand that, but I don't think we, I, I've never seen the details of that permit. I don't think I underst, I don't think we understand how we're going to use that permit, and how we're, how we're gonna, you know, what impact that has on that. And, and the easement is pretty broad, it could include other things.
That, that permit goes from the Lockwood Folly Crossing out to the, basically the Seabully, so the inlet navigation project that we just piggybacked on the, with the Corps on, we could not have done that piggyback effort under our permit if the Corps had not been able to do it under their authorization. So, if, if we don't have the easements, that permit is stymied.
I understand.
Basically, any new, it appears that any new permits that are coming out of CAMH or regulatory or the Corps are requiring easements. So, any new permits that we were to get, the Corps doesn't have to follow that authorization.
I understand.
Anything new that there's requiring easements in all permits, they're issuing, so, I mean, this is for now and in the future, it just seems best that we have permits for that area and, and if we're gonna plan on putting any sand on the beach down there.
David, how many permits do we have for that?
That, we, we have the, there's one shallow draft inlet five permits.
And who's that from? Is that the feds?
That is a federal and state issued permit to the town.
From both of the, from both federal and state?
Yeah, because you have to have a CAMH permit and a federal permit.
So, it's two permits, so you've got two permits. And what about the environmental permit for that?
The environmental, the environmental piece of that, it utilizes the SARBO, which is the South Atlantic Regional Biological Opinion, and that is a portion of the federal permit.
Okay.
So, let me, let me, so I, I think I understand, if we use the Corps of Engineers, we don't need a permit, basically. They, they don't require a permit, unless you just said it ch, it's changing. Is that what you said, Christie?
That's, that's, that, that is correct. If, if you, if the Corps of Engineers federal authorization is used, we, we don't, we don't need a, we don't need a permit. However, the whole reason for us getting a permit, the shallow draft inlet five permit, was just for this circumstance that have manifest, that has manifested itself here of the near recent past with the feds not being able to do the work.
Totally understand that, but, but we, at the end of the last meeting, we were, we weren't going forward with anything. We were still working with county, state, neighboring island, there, there's not even a plan, which I, I encourage that we have a plan.
What we're working on is the funding arrangement to do that, the decision authorities to, to come together on the funding, and, I mean, we, if, if we don't have permit, we don't need to waste our time with talking about getting the funding together.
So, we, so we, we do have permit, right?
We have a permit, but it is not complete without the easements.
Yep. Well, I mean.
So, that easement thing is grandfathered?
We, we don't have any.
You didn't need it when you got the permit, right? And you're saying now there's new requirements?
No, 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 that is not what I said. Not, that's not what I said. The shallow draft inlet five permit has a condition in it that requires the easement.
Oh, okay.
Okay. We have a permit, but we have not met the specification of that permit in order to execute it.
Right.
Right.
But you can get the, can the, can you not get the Corps to go out and get an independent contractor to do the work under their permit?
I, who knows what the Corps, is that, they haven't done that yet. They ha, they have not done that yet.
But you haven't asked them either, right?
Now, they did do the inlet crossing with a shallow, with a separate contractor, the, the, that. It, it's my advice for the town not to put all its bat, eggs in the Corps of Engineers basket. I mean, that's, that's, that's my counsel to the board, is that you craft your own options. Several years ago, when the shallow draft inlet five concept came up, it was envisioned as a Plan C, and it looks like to me that we're getting close to needing that in order to do anything out here, because the, the Corps is not, it is not being able to live up to the, the needs out there. And that, that shallow draft inlet has what I call a conjunctive use, is that the right word? Either or, either or use. It either allows sidecast operations, nearshore beach placement, or on-the-shore beach placement. And I believe that's where our best bet is served, is to, is to put sand on the beach with that shallow draft inlet permit.
I agree with everything you just said, David, but here's what my problem is. If we're gonna, and we talked, we, we communicated last week, that current easement that we have on the Central Reach, if we're gonna use that for the, for the east shore, is way too broad. We need to more narrowly focus that, so it just does what you just described, and nothing more.
Well, I had a similar thought. I remember the last time we went through easements, there was a bit of consternation by the, some citizens on what they were reading and what they were willing to, to sign, and we then did modify those easement statements that apparently alleviated some of that concern. Is that correct?
I would like to see the board.
Let me finish my statement. So, we did have to modify it, so what I would like is for us to review what the easement language is gonna be before we issue it to the citizens this time, because frankly, I felt like we were taken, we were caught flat-footed with it. And I got reaction from the, from citizens, so.
Well, just, the two thoughts on that, one is that's an attorney product, and so if you want, if you want the attorney, if you want to review the attorney's work, but we, we can't put her to work crafting an easement unless there's a budget accommodation made in order to procure those easements.
And my, my second thought is, I, I agree, we need a funding item on it. At least my concern is the wording, and make sure it represents what we want to do going forward.
David, can I ask what the fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars is for?
Those, that would be the easements.
Oh, just, not for dredging money?
No.
So, are you not budgeting for any dredging of the inlet for next year?
Don't, don't know what, don't know what to budget for, and also, those easements, in, in talking to the attorney, we discussed not having a crash course in easement procurement, and this, procuring these easements does not envision any type of inlet dredging in the fall, because that permit is only good from November to March, you know, because of the turtle windows. So, this, this does not envision any subsequent dredging that may happen, and actually, envisions taking eight months, eight to twelve months to procure those easements.
Yeah, so, so what you, you know, what you just said was, you know, we have budgeted for easement for a Lockwood Folly dredging project that we don't have any budget for because we don't know what it really entails, so.
And, and you know what, in, in, we, we vacillate a lot on where to, which line item to call that. You know, should you call it beach nourishment, should you call it professional services? You know, we hung that fifty thousand dollars in the Lockwood Folly dredging line item, just as a matter of convenience. But it, it's for easement procurement that's tied directly to the Lockwood Folly shallow draft inlet five permit.
Perfect, perfect, and therefore, we need to modify the language to reflect that narrow focus, is my point.
Well, um, okay.
But the money still needs to be there.
And I'm, I'm fine with that, if that's, it, it, and I like the name, because the name. Excuse me.
I like it being separate.
I like the name because it is focused on the Lockwood Folly dredging, because that's, that's the, that's the focus. But the ref, but the easement that you had said that we're gonna use, that is, was used for Central Reach, does not reflect that focus on the Lockwood Folly dredging.
Okay, that's a, that's really a discussion with the attorney on her work product, how, how the board wishes to proceed with that, that would be.
But I wanted to make that point before we, you know, we're authorizing fifty thousand dollars, but I just wanted to get that on the record. Okay, thanks, sorry.
But, the seventy-six thousand that was budgeted and was actually expended, was that for the Central Reach?
That was the, that was the crossing project that.
Okay, so.
So, that.
What easements did we have to get for that?
No, so that's the point.
That's, well, my question is, it says seventy-six thousand was budgeted and seventy-six thousand spent.
Well, we approved that.
We, but you're mixing, you're mixing an easement with the work was actually done previously too, you know what I'm saying?
Okay, so this was, okay.
This, and, and therein lies the nexus of the, of the distinction there. The seventy-six thousand was what we gave through the MLA to the state to put sand on the beach, whereas the fifty thousand in this context is administrative in nature.
Thank you. Okay.
Do you have any other questions about what's on the slide? But I would like to know if all the FEMA expenses are going away this year, so that.
I could, could I ask you to speak more slowly, or, or use the microphone? My ears are jumbling it up.
All the FEMA expenses are going away, so that is, is a little bit in our expense budget on, in B part. Do you have any other questions?
Can I just make one clarification, just a small number break for you guys, to kind of explain that about the beautification club? Just so everybody understands, in previous years' budgets on the beautification club line, it said five hundred dollars, and that was a five hundred dollar donation written out to them. So, this year, if this go, what budget goes forward, they would still only get a five hundred dollar check written out to them. But in the past, the remainder of those items for projects were in other lines such as access and recreation, the individual parks that are listed, and that's where the remainder of their projects failed, failed, and we pulled money from those lines. There was some dialogue that they wanted it so that it could be seen exactly how much. So, there would still only be a five hundred dollar check donation written to them, but the remainder of their projects would come from a line with their actual name on it, instead of being in those additional lines. So, that's why the beautification line went from five hundred to twelve thousand, because that's the remainder of their projects for the different parks, instead of being in things like access and recreation and the individual parks that are listed.
So, are they a quasi-government organization?
No.
No.
But we're funding their work?
They complement our work. So, so the question, Christie, we talked about this, but, so I saw a bulkhead in, in the budget. That's not the pocket bulkhead that the beautification has on their list.
No, that's actually bulkhead, like on the street end, like Ranger, or any of the side streets, whatever, and they'll opt, they'll use a budget, maybe one bulkhead here to replace the other.
Yeah, but there's, and it, it, okay, so it is a street bulkhead, not a, not the park bulkhead. And, and, and they also wanted, you know, str, sidewalk repair, so, and I see sidewalk repair.
That's a, that's a whole other department, that's a whole, yeah, that's the.
Cool, okay.
There's ones for new picnic tables and trash cans at Holstead, new sprinkler heads for Paget Gardens, some work down at the pavilion in the way of palm trees and irrigation, a new shed to put their equipment in, extending the walkway for Paget Gardens, and the bathrooms underneath the bridge, palms and ornamental grasses, and some areas near the public restrooms and resorts.
Okay, great.
And they got their own estimates.
Okay, and we're, and we're, and that's to do that work, yeah. To me, their complimentary job, they do a lot of softscape and, and they're not capable of doing hardscape, and you notice that list is basically hardscape. Okay, thank you.
On the professional services, we've gone from twenty-five thousand to sixty-five thousand, can you?
Yeah, that forty thousand increase, or if I'm wrong, is for the professional services for the Central Reach project. Some monitoring that we have to do for twenty years. Things like city and camera, and then, career accounts that happen.
The Jordan Boulevard Ops, I guess that's maintenance and repair, thirty thousand, is that, I know we just approved paving Jordan Boulevard.
That's a different department as well.
It's what?
The paving is in a different.
I understand that. I'm asking, what's this thirty thousand for?
We have to take over the maintenance this year for the DOT bridge project on the other side. The yearly maintenance comes back to the town, because they did it for one year, plus the water bill for that is in there. And we have had them to try to trace the, the contractor that put it in, trace any issues, but in the springtime before it went, or, or fall, and summer before it went down, for the winter, the water bill, they were turning seventeen hundred dollars.
I'm sorry, you lost me. DOT Bridge.
DOT Bridge, the base of the bridge where the flowers and the palms.
Oh, 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 okay.
The other side of the bridge.
Alright, okay, thank you.
Okay, you guys are jumping to particulars. Can you tell me what the sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollars for the East End Shore Protection is?
That's the remainder of what's left on our third-party contractor for the East End Shore terminal building.
Hmm, okay.
I think about forty-four hundred.
Okay. Um, I'm just gonna go down, I, I, it is a general theme, I think, about the budgeting, for exam, so, if you look at the budgets, for example, overtime recreation, nothing. We budget twenty-five hundred, we're year-to-date five hundred and forty-three, and we did adjust to two thousand. But are we gonna do another fifteen, that's basically, Christie, I'm sure, are we gonna do another fifteen hundred dollars in the, in the final quarter of overtime?
Probably, maybe not all of that. I try to be as good as I can about flexing off time, but then in next month, I'm gonna be here six days a week, so.
Yeah, so she's here in January, she's on her three days a week.
Her season's just starting.
Oh, I know, I know, that's, that's a bad example, but there's a lot of the, you know, and I, and I see the correction, which is good, but most of those examples like that, I don't see a correction. For example, if you go down to professional services mainland, thirty-five hundred, nothing spent so far, and we're budgeting thirty-five hundred again.
That's for our turn and trap roads, our sand mine over there, in case we have to do something for professional services in the event that we use that. So, typically, we do roll that year-to-year to use that money in case we have to do something over there. That's our property over.
Yep, I, yep, so.
And, and we're gonna have to bush hog that this year because it, we haven't done anything over there in the last eighteen months that I know of.
So, if we didn't use it last year, and we'll use it next budget probably, what happens to that three thousand dollars, or that thirty-five hundred bucks?
It doesn't get spent. It falls back to fund balance.
Okay. So, are we gonna talk fund balance? Because there's a lot of that happening, a ton of it.
I, I want to point out though, as well, that the numbers that you see are as of the end of March, so, there are April and May. There's three more months left in our budget cycle that aren't reflected in these expenses. And since those are our several months, a lot of this fund probably will be heading closer to those marks because we have not gotten there yet. Just, I just want you to just keep that in mind as we, as you look through this.
Yep, yep, yep. But it's, but it's all over, so, you know, you know, recreational programs, fourteen-five, we spent four thousand, we're going down to twelve-five.
And we're about to do a whole lot of tie-down shirts, so we have to.
And she even cut that budget. She cut, she's cut that already this year.
It's down to twelve-five, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, that's, there's not a lot of those, uh, uh, one that stands out, though, is travel and training. Sixteen thousand budgeted last year, nineteen forty-nine spent.
We, we weren't able to go anywhere this year, take care of any professional training at all related because of Central Reach project and the hurricane. That's, that's the bottom line on that.
And we cut that as well.
So, typically, typically, you know, you, so twelve thousand is a more realistic in a, in a, in a typical year?
Now, I'm gonna make a statement here on this. I haven't given these numbers a hard scrub from the manager's perspective yet. These, these are department head inputs. I haven't hard scrubbed these numbers, and I'm not sure that twelve thousand is enough, but.
He doesn't realize I cut that much progress.
Yeah, you, so, so actually, B part.
He travels out of that budget too, and things like hurricane conferences, and I.
Coast Resources Commission.
We needed to cut things last week, so there are some things I'm looking to cut. When you just ask him that question, he's suddenly unaware of it, so.
So, actually, I, I commend B part, because B part is one of the few that actually does recognize that the budget, that the, the, the next budget should be cut. Most of them do not. Most of them, they're just flat, you know, we, you could have a ten thousand, spent nothing, ten thousand next year. Most of the, most of the areas are that way, but B part, I command, and I'm just making sure that that's, that's what's realistic and that what's expected in a typical, typical year.
Can, can you explain the FEMA that we had expenses budgeted last year?
Well, the FEMA project.
And all of a sudden, they're not in there anymore?
Well, the FEMA project goes away, FEMA Irene, not FEMA, but.
Does that disappear now, so?
Yeah, so the revenues went away, as we talked about in the revenue workshop, and so the expenses went away, because that project went over.
So, you can't claim anymore on the Irene?
There's difference between able to get reimbursements on claiming and being able to budget expenses, okay?
So, will you still be trying to get reimbursements for?
Absolutely.
Oh, okay.
I'll just keep on going too, so, the next page, twenty-two, you know, same thing. What's shoreline monitoring, and you talked about that briefly, but, so that's increasing dramatically because of Central Reach, is that what you're saying?
Shoreline monitoring hasn't increased as seen this last year.
Well, we only spent forty-five hundred dollars.
I think that is. That's because, correct me if I'm wrong, David, but that, that part of shoreline monitoring is our transects where we survey the beach, and part of that was incorporated in Central Reach this year, so we were able to save some money because it leaned into that budget versus the overall shoreline managing.
Yeah, there's, there's fifty-three transects we do on, on annual basis, and get them surveyed, it's twenty-five thousand dollars.
So, typical, yeah.
And that's, that's typical, and the reason why there's forty-five hundred dollars expense there is after Hurricane Matthew, we had to do, we had to do some, some surveying out there.
It almost, okay, we, because I, you know, it, it makes, if you explain it, it makes sense, right? Otherwise, that number looks strange as heck. So, the next number, debris removal, I have a question, and this is kind of a, a theme too. I'm sure Matthew is a big part of that. Do we know how big a part of it is?
All of it.
All of it?
Yes.
Okay, so then you know my next question.
Twenty, why do you, why do you?
Why an increase when you haven't spent any of it?
Well, twenty-five hundred dollars, three thousand dollars will, is really just for the odd tire and pole that washes up on the beach from time to time in the normal course of, of business.
Public Works does that, right? Or is?
Depend, depending on who, what it is.
Yeah.
So, is this just an allocation that you have to do to say how much of that belongs to the fund?
Most of the time, what happens is that something will get washed up on the beach, and we'll have to pay a tipping fee to get it gone. That's normally what that is, is to put it in, and get it to the landfill.
But.
Well, David, I appreciate you bringing up the, a lot of these numbers you hadn't scrubbed yet, but I will have to say that, that there is a message here that I actually agree with, with Commissioner Freer, where th- this budget does not look like it represents, uh, uh, yet the, uh, the amount of review that I would expect if we are here to basically sign off on the expenses that we can go forward with the budget message, so.
Well, I don't, I don't think that's, that's what we had intended, uh, for the, for the presentation to be, when the, I mean, the commissioners had expressed a desire to be engaged in the process. We, we, we haven't, we hadn't.
Okay. Okay, that's fair.
We hadn't intended it to be any type of final thing at all without, you know, some input from the commissioners. We thought that.
Okay.
We thought it okay to, for it to be a pseudo draft.
Okay, alright, so, well, okay, so.
So.
And, I mean, 'cause there was a, it, there was a perceived, um, desire for some understanding on, on some of these things. So that was the, the spirit in which we, we brought it forward to you.
Okay, so, well, that's, that's, that's a good comment. Uh, I would just like to state that, you know, we, uh, we made some hard decisions, raised taxes last year, which was the, I was still convinced was the right thing to do, and I believe we got response back from the public that, that, uh, substantiated that. Uh, I think we do owe it to them, though, to show that we are, uh, we're sensitive to that, and that we, I certainly want the town to be funded to the level that they need to be, um, but I think what we're hearing here is the questions are, let's make sure that, that we, uh, well, we can justify what's here and when we can't. We, we, uh, cut back because back, I passed out the copies of the, the January goals meeting that we had, and, uh, I, I think it's in the best interest of the town for us to lo- set aside money for what we know is gonna be a recurring expense, and that's beach nourishment. So I think that's why we're here, we're, at least from my perspective, that's why the sensitivity's here where it is, is that wanna make sure that we can find, wherever we can to, to fund.
And, and.
Designate, you know, a, a line item for beach nourishment that's beyond what we've normally done.
I, uh, I, I do want to, if I could piggyback on that.
Hmm?
Um, keeping in mind that the occupancy tax, I mean, there's legislation that lays out exactly what the split is on how that occupancy tax is supposed to be, um, um, apportioned, and, um, in simple terms, it's sand and tourism-related, and it's, it's not what one thinks. Every time that I look at, every time that I think about it, I have to go back to the law and read it, because you would think that the apportionment is three percent sand and two percent tourism. It's not. It's two percent tourism and three percent beach nourishment. And, um, uh, I believe that, I don't, I haven't looked at.
No, you said the same thing.
Did, I'm sorry, it's.
Two percent sand, three percent tourism.
Two percent sand and three percent tourism, I'm sorry. And, um, if you, I think that if you go through there and, and I just did a windshield quickie on, um, how that racked up and kind of, uh, uh, made a tick mark on, is it tourism or sand? And we're, we're upside down on that ratio. We're actually, um, about sixty-five percent sand and thirty-five percent tourism-related. So we're in the, in the, the proposed budget. I didn't do that for the this year's budget, 'cause it's all skewed anyway with the, with the central reach project.
Alright.
But, um, I think that's, that's a, that's an important thing to, to, to note there.
Well, that's good to know, but that doesn't pre- prevent us, does it, from designating portion from the general fund to go into what we would use for sand renourishment, does it?
Let me interrupt just a minute.
Okay.
I've got to meet with the county manager. I gotta be at her office at ten o'clock. And, um, so I'm gonna pass the gavel to Mayor Proten and leave it in your good hands. I can't be at two places at once, but it was in my schedule.
You can do what they want, yeah. Thank you, sir.
One mission.
So, so to your point, David, too, so if this is preliminary, are we gonna have, uh, when are we gonna review the final at, at the budget message? I, I didn't think that was the purpose of the budget message.
What was that?
I'm looking, I'm looking at the calendar.
Yeah, I did, would you say, man?
Once you guys tell us what you are wanting out of this, unless there's another meeting you guys want us to have to look over the numbers, then the budget message is just a message. You don't have to approve it until quarter to June.
What, refresh me on what, what is the budget message on, I thought that was the message to the public.
That's the recommended budget from the manager. It doesn't mean that you have to, you have to adopt it or not.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, it's, it's, that gives you six weeks, well.
Okay.
Less than that.
So let's go through this meeting, and, and maybe we, maybe we do need another meeting then, uh, if, if, if we are not fully understanding the, the expenses.
Can, can I ask?
Well, or, uh, David, are you I, I'm sure you and the staff are taking notes as we make comments. Um, are you planning to incorporate those into the budget message for the next, when you come back with the recommended budget, or?
That, that, I mean, that would be what I, what I would, should do.
Okay.
Or will do.
Alright.
But, but in this level, in this level detail, that's.
Well.
It's on my line.
Well, we'll get.
Mr. Fletcher, you're the mayor now, you're the mayor now, so you're.
I can talk if you read the rules.
Well.
I can participate and vote.
Can I recommend that we maybe do other things over here?
As mayor, yes.
Yep, absolutely.
And just kinda move on at the weekend.
And make that decision later.
Can you just explain quickly, uh, how it is that, uh, one whole section of salaries, the sanitation, is not in the B part this year, and it was in last year? How is that different, or where's it budgeted?
That salary got moved to water, because that is part of a contract, correct, if I'm wrong, we talked about this the other day, a part of a contract that we received for waste, like, not just debris from the coal. We, that, because you guys, we took it out of sanitation and it was in the water.
Now you're really confusing me.
That's garbage collection on the beach, going to a contract service. Wait a minute, before, before you go there, Chris, John, if you, if you look at the salary sanitation, um, whole block, on page twenty, twenty-three, that whole.
What page?
The whole block is, whole block. That's what I'm looking at.
That whole block is removed.
Right.
It's replaced with contract services sanitation right above it. It's seventy-five thousand dollars. That's, so, so, we're, we're.
Ah, okay, okay. That's all I needed, no.
So moving that as a contract, and then the person that was in there is going to be moved to water, so he can do the water work, because the contract work's gonna be done out of the contracts, but not by that person.
And, and that is beach cleanup?
Well, just shifting gears, let me pull it back, I've written two hundred and twenty minutes. Uh, when I first started here, about nineteen ninety-six, the garbage collection, the beach strand there, we had twenty-six public access ways and just a handful of trash. That service has grown where we got over a hundred garbage cans, and I'm running a seven-day-a-week sanitation department, and I'm bas- basically utilizing my water and sewer staff to accomplish that right there. And I'm trying to look at different ways that it would be better for us to do it, and I actually switched it to people, somebody to weigh the cost for that service. And I feel we could be better off to pay that service, it is, all that garbage is a result of tourism and rentals. Uh, it got to the point where somebody thought, they thought they needed the trash can under the house, where we just put them up way up in the night, and I think we're like seventy-five down to the beach strand itself, and we probably got like maybe thirty or forty on the hill. I'm fine as far as staying up most of the heat, but from Memorial Day to Labor Day, there's, that, that's just too overwhelming to try to run a sewer, water and sewer department without start adding as much of any employees. The beauty of contracting it out is if he needs three or four guys to do it, they'll get it done and be off there by later, but it's got to the point where I have to take four people, have four different vehicles to get that garbage up there, try to get out there before the crowds got in, because I'm scared right going on up to somebody. I mean, it is, it is, it's wrong. So in order to be able to better maintain our water and sewer and do what I need to do within, I wanted to propose we could build that out, and I'd be still sending that in and trying to see if I can narrow the numbers down even from what I got, but I feel like it would be best heading that direction. And also, this upcoming year, I'm gonna get our timesheet to a format where if we're dumping a trash can, it's on that timesheet, if we're building accessways, it's on that timesheet. If we're working on a park, you'll walk down here, well, there's not just garbage, you go to the B part. You got that, you got all the beach right here, this, this park right up here, that's gonna be a week to clean, keeping that mud between the legs. You got the dog park, and you got all these other places, so, so the part about the, the, just the sanitation worker, there's a lot more goes with it. I could use an accessway, for example, Hill Street accessway, we replaced that, we re- we actually rebuilt the thing ten years ago, it's two hundred and eighty-eight feet long. That was done with water and sewer staff. If I paid somebody to build that right there, the, the labor alone was nothing but nineteen thousand dollars on that accessway. I could build an accessway for half the price of what a contractor actually called, would charge us to do it. So I feel like if I do a better job aligning up the parts and pieces, you know, but where we actually spending our time at, I don't know if that was true number when we were using represent, you know, just one man or one, but that's, that's where you see that difference at.
Chris, that's. So, the B part, we, we just talked about the ratio of tourism to sand, so am I hearing that this would be an example of what we could charge to tourism?
And, and that, that was in my, upside down.
Because it's.
It actually, it actually be.
Okay. Alright, good.
But it was making up, it was showing up sanitation, it was showing up there.
Okay. Uh, just a thought, you know, we've, uh, we awarded the contract to Bandit, I think, for yard, for debris. Is there a way we could, uh, capitalize on, who do you have in mind for?
I've got a, a pretty comparable conquer from Maxi to the same guy that's got that.
Okay.
But I wouldn't love to go back through it and, and do the number game, and just make, give him accurate information, and we know for sure what number.
I'd just offer that because it, it might give us an edge on, on, uh, squeezing the price down.
And a lot of the. If I, if I talk too much, y'all just cut me off at any time. Just like that.
There's no good happen.
You got the, I had four pickup trucks out there today, you know, that's why I'm wearing apparel and vehicles, but actually I water and sewer department's funded, and I think the last vehicle, several poles for sanitation was in two thousand eight or two thousand nine, and, uh, I know somebody who probably said, well, maybe you could utilize hang-me-downs or something at the police department. Well, I've actually done that for our public works department. I've got two I work in now, and we're probably gonna have three up for sale. So if it won't ride down that highway without having trouble, when you put in that beach sand up there and July and it's a hundred degrees, you will find out what's done.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll just leave you today.
No, I think everything you said is a smart move. We just didn't, you know, it, it needs an explanation, and it, and it hopefully will relieve some of the pressure on your workers, and maybe even relieve some of the pressure on your overtime budget.
Well, I, I, I think it will, but, uh, I, I definitely think that's, that's where we need to be. I know, like, if I didn't feel like that's necessary, believe me, uh, talking to some of my best friends in front of all these and their friends and additional help, I know everybody likes to keep it close as they can, but that was the point where you just, you can't do so much of what you got to work with, that's where I, where I'm at.
Chris has good management.
Yep.
Yeah, I've, I've been on the beach every morning. I don't know how you do a, what, what's a pickup truck supposed to do with eighty cans out there full of garbage in the morning?
You know, that's the beach strand part, we don't know about the heat.
Yeah.
What's the hill?
Uh, actually, the roadside accessways, if you parks, the dog park, anywhere, if you have a trash can or anything along the, oh, you build a park.
Oh, then the strand.
Build a park. It's, you know, it's a big part of our day and from, from, and I'm saying, like, this, the pose like I'm, it's not feeling the gas in the whole year, but it's feeling the heat from Memorial Day to Labor Day. After that right there, you know, I pretty much, it starts to coast down or something, unless you, in the year like we had this year, where you had that storm in October, which created much more work than we were actually even able to perform in the house with a, with a period of small crew.
Yep, okay. Uh, let's go back twenty-two, speaking, so what, what's the, is that the last three lines, or that, uh, salaries beach project?
Yeah, I'm part that salaries are the police department.
So that's a half headcount, basically? Okay, and.
Was that the ambassador?
Wait, 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 no, 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 no.
Twenty-five thousand?
On, on page twenty-two, salaries beach project, that's what Chris was talking about, building walkways, putting sand fence, that kinda stuff down.
I'm sorry.
That's what that manpower, uh, charges.
Okay.
Oh, okay, okay.
Oh, so, so what you're doing here, David, or Chris, is you're spreading your salary to functional area?
Absolutely. That's, that's what we're, we've attempted to do, and using best operator, um, estimates on.
Okay, so that would have moved, alright, I think that's what I need to hear.
Yeah.
That's, that's exactly what.
Okay.
Is that a half a headcount or a full?
Uh, that's, that's two halves.
Two halves.
That's two halves of two different people. Because of the type of skill sets that they have. It's mostly general labor work.
What's, what's Chamber Commerce line item? Three thousand?
That's the.
We give donations every year to nonprofits and such, so that was.
But we haven't so far this year.
I, I'm, I'm notorious for holding those donation lines until the la- latter part of the year, because where I don't want to get is, you know, like, if we have a bad collection year, and we've made the donations upfront, and then we have to cut back on services, I, I figured that, that would be okay to let someone else have the pain of not getting the money if we ran short at the latter part of the year.
Okay. On, on twenty-one, what is park and rec utilities included?
Um, that's the water and sewer for parks and lights.
Why, why is it only eight hundred and thirty-four dollars?
Because we haven't gotten to the busy season where the water starts flowing.
Wow, so it's that skewed towards, uh, the la- one quarter?
And that line item by May and June is pretty, very high, because we bill each water.
But that, that implies August, we didn't, you know, you know, July, August, September, so that's.
This is only for April, May, and June, right? That's the only thing that's left.
Right.
And it's gonna be that much?
You know what, this one, that, 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 that may be a good catch, um, because I believe that this year we actually put the water for the other side of the bridge over there, in there. We need to double check that.
Somewhere else?
I think also that some of the Port Johns, for instance.
Ah, yeah.
They go on the beach strand, so we all need to put those in, and we have our, they'll go in on Memorial Day, and then they'll be revealed at the end of June, but it's, well, I don't wanna put it up. Margaret, so we know that makes fourteen hundred dollars worth.
For Port Johns.
But that, we, we do need to double check that and make sure we're not double billing the, uh, water for the bridge, across the bridge over there, uh, where we've included in Jordan Boulevard. We'll double check that.
Yeah, okay, I mean, that's just a thing, obviously jumps out on you.
Yeah.
What, what do we, uh, what's the upgrade for the Starfish Fire Substation?
Chris got a quote on the new roof. They haven't had a new roof in, coming here.
Oh, okay.
We're gonna have to shame.
It's probably a few, a few, a few years.
And the line by, right below it, that does, does the new expenses help it, like, the utilities and stuff like that.
Of what?
The line will have added.
That thousand dollars?
Yeah, will be there, off operations.
Which we, which we didn't, is, that's something new?
Mm, because we haven't had anything down to the fire station for a few years.
So. But, um, so we're helping them with their.
Uh, we're, we're not helping them, 'cause we have a contract with them to provide, um, fire services for the beach, and in the hundred days of summer, they actually put, uh, a, um, a unit or two over here on the beach, so they, they run a substation equivalent there, and by contract, we provide them with facilities.
But, but we didn't last budget cycle, right? It's blank.
The, um, that thousand dollar. The, um, that thousand dollars, correct me if I'm wrong, Manager Margaret, but that thousand dollars was probably really embedded up in the Starfish Fire Station upgrade. We, we, that was a, a, a probably a misnomer that we just ran the electric bill and water bill in that upgrade line item. But the, the ten grand is for some new shingles.
Yeah, yeah.
That's not right.
Oh, no, I was trying to think about something.
Okay.
The public restrooms, what's, is that here and the two facilities here?
That's what I assumed was also porta potties, no, but no, I'm just saying.
Third line item down, page twenty-one, the, the, the bottom of twenty-one.
The bottom.
Um, I think that depending on, at towards the end of the year, how much we had left in each line, it's come from both. But, I mean, sometimes the Port Johns have come from the one line, sometimes they've come to the other, but one doesn't change.
Where does the, that's a coin operated laundry and bathroom facility out here?
The, it, as far as their dock fee, they get the shower and then they have to pay an extra five dollars if they wanna use the laundry.
Oh, some reason, where I got, I thought it was coin operated for some of that, but, so. Where's the, is there a line item here for, cause I doubt that's paying for what we've got invested in it, in the bathroom, in the shower and the laundry?
All of that comes out of the restaurant. And, well, some, some of it comes out of that utility and then the, um, Bridge View Park. But the majority of the increase, or actually it's called Rothschild Davis on this before its name changed. The majority of the increase in the Rothschild Davis line was taken into account from, from thirty-four thousand to thirty-five thousand. We're still considering the fact that we may get this splash pad in and water usage in that. Um, we're still waiting for here. I had hoped to have a design this morning in my email, but it's not there yet.
Okay.
So it depends on if we let the contract and what the turnaround is, there may be a month of water usage in that.
Okay. Back to the fee structure for the dock and all the amenities afforded by that. Are, are we gonna evaluate what those fees are after we have some experience with usage and then cost to the town of the facilities?
We can. The only thing we're not allowed to change is the five dollars charged for the sewer pump out. That's state mandated in the grant that we got, but all the other fees we could change.
And I know we gotta be competitive, otherwise that would drive down usage and that would defeat the purpose, but I would like to see. I, I, I just wanna see that we're monitoring that and make the right decisions based on that.
Right, we're keeping a, um, spreadsheet and it includes if they're paying ten dollars or five dollars per pound, if they use fifty amp, they pay ten. If they use the twenty or thirty amp, they pay five. And since we opened, I believe it was September-ish that the first boat came in, we labeled it a hundred dollars.
Okay.
Um, I, I think you talked about, but where, where's the, on that same page, beach vegetation, the fifty thousand, where, where's that being?
Wait, what, what, sorry, where?
The fifty thousand for, uh, page twenty-one, the very last line?
Beach vegetation, that would be assuming that, um, if the board decided they wanted to do this fiscal year. An appropriation take care of the east end before next fiscal year, that, that beach vegetation would be based on doing something west of the project area.
Both?
Fifty thousand would, would be west, that fifty thousand would represent west of the project area.
West of Central Reach, okay.
So that doesn't, that would be taken into consideration that the board may choose to do something this year to help with what's already gone down in the east end. If not, then that would not be enough money in that line to do it. To be east and west. This fifty thousand represents west of the project.
Only west of the project, okay, perfect.
Well, don't we need to apply vegetation on the east end?
But we probably need to do that before July.
That's all right. That's gonna be in-
So-
Current budget, right?
Current budget year.
So where would that be?
But there's not an appropriation made for that.
So you'd be coming back?
So in other words, I, you would be seeing before July, standing up there for meeting absentee.
Right. So, it's not in B part now. Alright.
And that includes not only vegetation, but the fencing and the roping and the whole, you know, the package, right?
The package.
Okay.
Now again, I'm gonna keep looking back at this ratio of B part. Does, can, uh, fencing and beach vegetation, is that tourism?
That would be nourishment. That would be sand.
Right, but I, I think all of that, I, I don't know. I guess you gotta look at the language of how you gotta define the ratios, but to me, it's, it's kind of, uh. The appeal of the beach would certainly influence tourism, so, anyway.
You, you, you might be able to break out that, you know, the, the posts and rope and stuff, right, but?
Since stabilization is a permit requirement, uh, for, to do it, it's really logical for it to be housed as a sand definition.
Okay, yep.
Okay.
Well, you brought that up, so east, we're still on the permit from the cor- um, Corps of Engineers, what we did on east, so.
Right, and, and again, the, the corps flies by their own rules. They don't have a state, they have a federal authorization and it's not a beach nourishment project. So therefore they don't, it's a navigation maintenance project, uses the least cost method of disposal. They don't have to stabilize. They, they don't have, but our permit, not only does it require an easement, but it also requires a stabilization.
But, but my question is what we've done on the corps' permit, we can, without any additional easement, we can then continue that, um, permit by doing the east end, um-
We just gotta get permission from them. We, we don't have to have an easement formally. We have, uh, per the town attorney, we have to get permission from them.
Great, thanks.
Which, which I hope to make as informal as possible. The town of Holden Beach has permission to put sand fence and vegetation in front of my lot is basically what we would hope to get in writing from those property owners.
Okay.
Awesome. The, uh, page twenty-one, uh, the fifth line item down did say transfer to general fund and that's blank, which I, I like to see that. Uh, can we put a line item in here that says transfer from general fund as a means of funding a, uh, a, a, a line item for beach nourishment from the general fund?
This is the expense side, okay?
Alright.
If, if you transfer money from the general fund, it's gonna be in the revenue. And that revenue line is already there and it's eight hundred thousand dollars and represents about half of the debt service payment that's in there on the debt service on the Central Reach project.
Okay.
Cause remember you charged seven cents last year roughly.
So that's routing the tax bill to you into the fund to pay for the-
That actually, um, there will be a transfer from the general fund, about seven cents, to the B part fund. And that, uh, will make up about half of the debt service payment on the Central Reach project.
Okay, what I'm getting at is back to our goal of five percent of the budget designated for beach nourishment, separate from the B part, so. That's why I keyed in on the, that line item instead of transfer to, transfer from. Is there a way we can have a line item that represents five percent of the, of the operating budget we're setting aside for beach nourishment?
So you want to take the five percent and put it in that line?
I'd like to have a line item that, that accomplishes that goal. I don't know, I understand what you're saying about the transfer, the general fund is revenue, but we expense against revenue, so I'd like to, I'd like to earmark five percent for beach nourishment with the, well, the goal is, I wanna get out of having to raise taxes every, for a major project like Central Reach. To where year by year, we're setting aside funds from, I'll use the term general funds, from revenue. So that we have, that is deemed a priority and we budget for that.
The, the, if I could make a recommendation, I think that what you're getting at is to set up a capital reserve account.
That's probably the better way to say it.
And, and the best way to do that, right now, you have undesignated fund balance in the B part fund. The best way to do that is to appropriate that undesignated fund balance equal to an amount and set it aside in the capital reserve account. That would be, that would be the, the way to do that. A way to do that.
And it would accrue year to year unless we spend, unless we allocate for beach nourishment.
It would, it would be subject, it would be subject to an annual appropriation, um, that would add to it. But in the, in the creation of that capital reserve account, um, some of the language that you have to include in there. You have to specify exactly what it's for, how long you would expect it to, um, to, um, be in existence. And there's, uh, there's three things there and how, how it is anticipated to be funded, I believe.
Okay.
But that, that would be a way to, um, cause right now, what you have is about, um, two and a half million dollars in undesignated B part fund balance. And it's, it's, it's however you want to designate, or however you would want to spend that. So if there's a desire to carve out for future beach nourishment projects, that would be a way to do it. And it's, and it's pretty much the, the governmental way to do it.
But there's not only a desire to carve out, and I, I totally agree with that, there's a desire to grow that more than it's been grown in the past. So we don't have to go back and raise ta- you know, the seven cents tax every ten years.
Well, I mean, I, to, to grow it, uh, up until the big appropriation to fund the Central Reach project, you had six million dollars there, so.
Right, yeah, but I, I don't think six million was adequate. But I know you're, the, the other challenge is to maintain a fund balance reserve. So th- those two cha- those two are kinda competing with each other.
Yeah, it's kind of the same thing. You just have to decide, right, the way you wanna do it.
And, and the way to do it is, is, is cut expenses. Cause revenue is revenue. Or raise revenue, obviously, or cut expenses. Um, I, I have a question, uh, to use-
Well, administratively, I can get to the, to the, to making an appropriation from B part fund balance is setting up a capital reserve account for, um, future beach projects. I mean, that's. And, and five percent would be of the operating budget, right? Or, um, or would, is what you're talking about is five percent of the, of the annual occupancy tax collections? Cause five percent of the, uh, amount, I, I'm just, I'm trying to freelance here.
Good question.
Yeah, I'm trying to freelance here. We, we, we've got budgeted about one point eight million dollars in occupancy tax collection. Five percent of that's ninety thousand dollars. If you wanted to set an amount aside in a capital reserve account from a fund balance appropriation, that, that math is, is fairly straightforward and easy to do.
I, I, I think the five percent was an increase.
Now, when, uh, I, I heard what you, he's, he's talking about five percent of what?
Yeah, technically, occupancy tax.
Yeah.
Well, but it's, it's, what I was trying to get to is, is to define how much you wanna set aside out of the undesignated B part fund balance. And, and I was just using that as a hypothetical.
Well, if we used operating budget, what would that number be?
It's about one point eight million dollars. Cause you wouldn't include, you wouldn't include your, um, your debt services in there.
Yeah, you couldn't include other things, you know, like in great money, your brother.
Well, I was sure anticipating more than ninety thousand.
Yeah, that's, the five percent was an increase, not the total of what your, of what the goal was. Ninety thousand is-
So you want to increase the revenues by five percent?
No.
No.
Only way we do that is raise tax. That's not, that's definitely not what we wanna do.
Both, fund balance, fund balance, B part fund balance.
Well, we had as one of our goals, establish a sand fund equivalent to five percent of the budget. Now. I guess I was thinking five percent of the revenue would go toward a sand re- renourishment line item-
Okay.
Per year. So what does that, what does that look like?
Which revenue? The ad valorem tax revenue or the, the B part revenue?
Uh, ad valorem.
Okay, that's the difference.
I mean, I'm throwing, this is workshop, I'm throwing it out for discussion, so I don't-
I'm just saying, spread around.
The only problem I see with this is, again, it's competing with fund balance. And if our fund balance isn't where it should be-
Right.
And everybody said that for the past fifteen years, but it's slowly been going up over the years. Because whatever we have left over from our budget that we don't spend goes towards fund balance. So that's, that's, that's the little bit of extra we've got. The only way to put five percent more into a sand fund would be to raise taxes five percent.
Or cut expenses.
Or cut expenses.
Right. Well, and maybe-
Which this budget obvi- absolutely does not do.
That's what I'm saying, is we consider talking about this all day long and all we're doing is discussing the numbers. We haven't actually cut one thing, one penny today.
We're only on the blue fund.
I thought we did. They're, they're, they're evaluating cer- a, a few things that we've, we've discussed that.
Well. I, what I'm looking at is earmarking, I mean, we aren't talking about spending anything right now. We're talking about accruing a fund balance that would, would decrease the chances of having to raise taxes for what we know is gonna be an expected expense going forward. Probably every seven years if we're lucky. So I'm, I, I see your point about fund balance. I don't wanna, I don't wanna do anything that's gonna impact our credit rating and, and other factors as related to fund balance, but merely say, suggesting that we designate a portion of the budget year to year for that. And maybe it's in the, uh, David, that you, the, the undesignedated, I guess when you designated, it's a hit against, uh, fund balance?
The only hit against fund balance that you need to worry about is any hit against the general fund balance. Cause that, that's the litmus test. That's the litmus test that's, that the local government commission looks at. And because that is directly tied to the governing entity's ability to tax.
Right, right.
So, um, on the other funds, um, the fund balances on the enterprise side, um, really the, uh, they- Um, really the, uh, they don't look at fund balance as much as they do a quick ratio and operating ratios. But in the B part fund, there's not any fund balance measurement that we're held accountable for. That's, that's totally up to the, the commissioners, how, how they would want to squirrel that away. If you will. Right now, right now, um, just spitballing. You've got two and a half million dollars in B part fund balance. And if you wanted to, you could appropriate five percent or you could appropriate a number certain. If you want to put a million, if, well, I mean, if, if, if y'all wanted to set up a capital reserve account. You could put five hundred thousand dollars from the undesigned fund balance in a capital reserve beach nourishment account.
But would that impact our, our fund balance ratio or?
No, that's in the, that's in the B part fund.
You just stay within B part.
Yeah, that, that stays, that stays within, in B part and doesn't, it doesn't hit the general fund whatsoever.
To me, that, that, that's fine, but it doesn't accomplish what we wanted. We want to make B part healthier and the general fund balance healthier.
Well, I think one, uh, let's just throw a number out. If we, if we designate a million a year. On the methodology you just talked about.
Well, I mean, you could designate a million dollars this year in this budget and then next year it would be such. You know, subject to a different appropriation.
Each sitting board would do that, but.
David, do you have a current handle on what percentage of our, uh, occupancy tax. Is used to pay operating expenses for the town's operating expenses? Or even a hard number of, how much are we taking out of B part fund to pay for operating expenses?
You know, it's not managed that way in terms of operating expenses. I mean, if you wanted to say that town operating expenses are six million dollars, you know, three of that's water. A million and a half is B part and a million and a half is general fund. Well, then the, the obvious answer there is twenty five percent, but that also includes a debt service. You know, for the Central Reach project in there, so, um, um, as far as. That's a very broad and general question that you're gonna have to get me a little closer in order to drill down with an answer. As far as the town's operating expenses, the town's operating expenses. Include those expenses for tourism relate, you know, tourism related and beach nourishment, so. What, what are you defining as town operating expenses? Cause the water fund is separate.
I mean, you could almost designate each one of these lines in this spreadsheet as operating expenses. That are coming from B part.
Well.
And, and some aren't operating expenses, obviously. And, and the problem is very little is left over for your sun, your sand fund. That's the problem.
But, well, what we just heard, forty percent of the, the ratio is supposed to be only forty percent is for sand. Three to two, right?
Right. So then, so then from page twenty one, twenty two, twenty three. And you're saying forty percent should be sand and the rest should, sixty percent should be tourism or quote unquote operating expenses? Is that?
I mean, that's what I hear. I, I'm not saying I, we don't have a choice to support it, it's. The rules are, B part funds will be spent sixty percent tourism, thirty percent.
Yeah, and, and let me, let me muddy the water a little bit more for you. You know, that's the, that's the legislation and that occupancy tax. It's however the board chooses to interpret these expenses. Whether they're tourism related or they're beach nourishment. The language, uh, uses words that relate to tourism related expenses. It says like water and sewer, like fa- tourism related, like water and sewer. Like fire protection, like police protection, those kinds of things. So you do have some latitude. And what, you know, the rack up on this year's budget is probably not too awful different than what it's been in the past. It's just that we haven't had a huge debt service line item. Those funds have really just fallen to the undesigned fund balance by, just by act that we didn't. Execute a large scale beach nourishment project.
I, I think though.
Further confusing.
No, I, I think though, our, our goals though is to, is to realign more towards. The forty percent and focus on the forty percent in the B part. So our goal is to move some of this expense out of B part to, to make it more, you know, so we have. So we have more of a B part, a sand reserve, so when Central Reach has to be done over again in ten years.
Wait, just, just let me say that when you move so- some of these expenses are. Are direct tourism related. You can't, you can't argue that the fire station down there. Existence during the summertime is not a result of, of tourism. I mean, that's what it's here. Unless you, unless you want, unless you want to say that, um.
I could argue that one easily.
Okay.
Cause those houses are here twenty, twelve months a year, uh, that they're, they protect.
And, and, and herein lies the, the nexus of the whole discussion there is when you move those. Those expenses over to the general fund, you still got the expense. They still have to be paid for.
Yeah, but I, I agree.
Okay.
I agree. And then you got to make the tough decisions. Here, we're kind of, we, we relied too much on the B part, in my opinion. And, and delayed making some tough decisions. And, and we paid the price, cause we, we, we had to go out and borrow twelve million ball, dollars. And tha- and that's the, that's the price we eventually paid.
What this really all boils down to is twelve years ago, when they put this new town hall in service and the new E O C on service. Okay? That is also when the economy tanked, land prices went down, everything, everything all happened at one time. We could have either raised taxes five or six cents then, or we could take some money out of Part B, which we never did before. And start using that to pay what before that had been considered ad warm tax money. And that was a choice that was made rather than raise taxes when everybody was strapped. We chose to do, take it out of Part B. And that was a choice that was made twelve years ago.
And understood that, so it is, it is what it is. So all the burden was put on, you know, the last tax increase.
Is gonna be to sit there and say, okay. We're gonna have to either raise ad warm taxes, which nobody wants to do, or cut expenses. And the only way to cut expenses is gonna be to cut services.
I've got a lot of, I've got line items. Can I answer your question?
Can I, I'm not finished yet.
Okay.
Okay, when I first sat down here, started doing this, I did the exact same thing. I went through every line item and every line item, and everything said, you cut a hundred dollars off of here, you cut a thousand off of there. But what, what ends up happening is. The, the, the money that he uses, he uses that, it, it's kind of like your, your bank account. You don't sit there and say, every cent is accounted for in a certain fund and if I can't, I can't move it around. He moves money around as needed to pay the bills. And if, if we, if we start making it so tight that he can't do that. Every time he goes to pay a bill, he's gonna come before us and say, I need to reappropriate money from here to here. Because I don't have the money in, to, to do this. So you're gonna end up seeing. Literally hundreds of appropriations to, to pay for things that he normally covers on a day to day basis without having to do that. Does that make sense, David?
I'll go back to last year when we were doing this and that comment was made. If you cut the budget at all, you lose services. David, there were fifty line items last year that were over budgeted, and did you not save a hundred thousand dollars last year?
Yeah, if you want to start talking about that there were several line items that were, uh, not executed, like fuel. If you want to get down into that, that level of detail, fuel wasn't fully executed. I mean.
But you saved a hundred thousand last year, right?
Yeah.
You reduced, you didn't spend a hundred thousand of the budget.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
In the general fund, in the general fund.
Fund where it is supposed to be still even after saving a hundred thousand dollars? Have we, have we increased our general fund to where the local commission is happy and says, you're where you're supposed to be? You're where everybody else is at?
No.
No.
No. We haven't.
So, so eventually you have to acknowledge that problem, that what happened.
I agree.
So you've done that. So then you have to put a plan in, in budget to correct that problem.
I agree.
So, and we did it last budget by tackling the tax increase. And now we need to recognize that we need to then now look at the expenses. And, and it's been B part a little bit, but we're, we've really just been, getting started, actually. We're not, these are the line items that are presented to us and this is our duty to do this. I don't, I don't think we're trying to micromanage, David. I think, uh, and, and they're able to explain most of it, but some of it, they're gonna go back and, and look at some of these line items. We really haven't even talked about the big stuff, to be honest with you, and we're good there. Salary is one of the biggest things. Uh, salary increases. Well, hold on, hold on, not quite yet.
You want to take a five minute pause?
Yeah.
Well, we can, if you like.
We're taking a five minute pause?
Yeah. Maybe you can answer this, Christie. I, I have a.
We're missing the budget, girl.
Yeah, she gave, she gave up.
I think she, I think she's halfway across the bridge now, um, no. Chris, maybe you can answer this. What's access and recreation? It's line, it's page twenty two.
Yeah, that's a line that Chris and I share a lot, cause some of the work he does for accessways comes out of there. We were about to have to spend twenty two five to fix accessways that were damaged here in Matthew. Twenty two thousand five hundred, uh, in this budget here that we probably won't get funding back for. It's also for moral, for like street ends, like parking lots, you know, accessway parking lots.
Yeah, okay, okay.
And when you say accessways, it's just a material portion of it if I'm doing it in half.
I'm curious whenever I see a kind of fifty eight thousand three hundred dollars, is that based on the previous budget that that's what we spent?
Well, I will say this, you, you know, that, that number's real big. Like I said, I, I did one accessway down there, I did one accessway.
I'm not, I'm not referencing the size. Whenever I see something exact like that, I, I.
I, I don't have the previous years in front of me then, but when it comes up to like a three hundred dollars, that makes me think that a project came in. Or at the end of the year, that we thought it would be something similar like the next year, based on like the same footage. So that's why it went in at that amount. Maybe one was replaced, we did another one, the same size was gonna be replaced and that's why it went in at that.
Okay, okay, so you can defend that.
That's the one, one of the lines that I'm getting, except last Friday, but a little bit.
Four, four tonnage on the cocaine, that's, you know, a hundred dollars a, a ton or a hundred dollars a truckload. So that may be, you know, we've estimated how many truckloads that we need to re-up.
Yeah, so you see the theme there, right? And you, and you recognize the theme. I, I'll, I'll see in others that they, that they didn't not recognize the theme, right? So you, you, you said, you know, last year we had a budget, we didn't meet, we didn't spend that money in that budget. And this, this budget, we're not gonna request as, as much. I think we could probably sharpen our pencils a little bit more in some of that, but, um. You know, that's, that's where, uh, what I'm asking. I also have another comment about, and I talked to somebody. It, it's, I know we went through the revenue, I'm gonna step back. I know we went through the revenue previously. But without the expense, you don't really know what's needed in the revenue. So the previous, our first budget, we, uh, David, you, you know, you had some ways to increase the revenue. We talked about increase revenue or decrease the expense. So remember we did, you, you, you know, we did the water rate, you did the permit rate, which was great.
Which was last year.
Yeah, so, but this revenue, we didn't have any, um, increases as far as I know. So, which, which was, which was fine, except we didn't see the, this, the expenses yet, right? So I think we need to readdress revenue and look at ways of covering some of these costs. Uh, covering Chris's, you know, um, we, we have a lot of guests that come over that bridge. Over the, that directly affect B part and are putting nothing, adding nothing to the revenue of, of this town. And we're, we're about the only ones that don't charge for parking, for example. So I really think that parking. If we, if we recognize that we need to make some changes and make some dram- some, some significant changes. Then we really, you know, I don't want to just focus on expense, we need to focus on revenue as well.
We had a revenue workshop and I wasn't directed to add any additional revenue.
And, and one of the, you know, as, as that came out of the goals workshop, was that you didn't want to undertake any new programs. And paid parking is a new program. Now, we can, we can work on that. I, I would forecast that we could work on that. But it's not gonna be anything definitive before this budget's gotta be adopted. Paid, paid parking is a huge endeavor, um, in terms of. And, and I would hate to try to predicate some expenses on a paid parking initiative. That we know absolutely nothing about.
I, I totally agree with this budget. That's why I really didn't put it in there. But we were talking about, you know, this building ten years ago.
I, I, and, and, um, one of the things that I've also marked in, in, you know, not knowing. Uh, what anyone else's perspective is on it, the, the paid parking initiative would be a management objective. To undertake in the upcoming year, but also an A B C store. You know, that would be a, that would be an initiative and we could get an answer on that, um. You know, the, that, the few restaurants that we have here. They actually, because of the DRAM shop law, their revenue actually goes to the county. Because that's, in North Carolina, you have a designated place that restaurants have to procure. Their mixed beverages, uh, from, so, I mean, those are, those are two possible revenue streams. That could be investigated in the upcoming year. They're not gonna be re- I mean, they're, we wouldn't, that's a whole lot of.
Lot of work, I, I understand.
And it may require some enabling legislation also.
Are you talking about putting one on, on the island?
Yeah.
Or on town property. I believe, see, that's part of the, our, our.
Like an E O C?
Our disa- our disadvantage on knowing what the rules for A B C stores are. Is that, um, you know, they're, in, in Brunswick County, it is all over the place. As far as where they can be, who can have them, there's a.
Cause the board has to approve where they go, I guess.
And, and you, there has to be, there, there's a lot of particulars with it. But still, it's a, it's a potential revenue stream. And I don't know how much of a revenue stream it is. Um, you know, I'm sure that we would get into, oh gosh, I hate to hypothesize. But let's just say that we came up with, it'd be two hundred thousand dollars a year. Well, as, as far as a, a net takedown for the town, then I'm sure that that discussion is gonna be, well, guess what? That money came from that Brunswick County liquor store over there, they're not getting it. That money came from that Brunswick County liquor store over there, they're not getting it, and would they be willing to, to help with the beach nourishment on the inlet dredge in from then on? So those are some of the dynamics that we're bound to incur, uh, whenever we would go through that type of process. But, the big one is, um, it could be the paid parking on the beach, but there's a, there's a host of issues associated with that, too. But, we do have some nearby communities that have paid parking, we could benchmark those and see how it goes.
Yep, I do like the idea that it spreads it away from the homeowners to bear the cost, you know?
Of the.
Paid parking would be those who are visiting for the day, uh, and that would be a good revenue, apart from it being the property owners.
I, I think that's just a logical progression of, of, of thought on, uh, revenue production.
Yeah.
Now whether, whether or not there's some gotchas in there that would prohibit it, you know, we, we don't know until we, until we go through that.
Well, David, would you take that, then, I agree, I don't.
I, I had already.
We obviously can't do it.
I'd already intended to do that, as, as a, you know, management initiative and.
So we basically have to start now, cause I, I agree, it's gonna take.
Yeah.
A long time, okay.
Sorry.
We're gonna switch to this.
I'm ready.
It can be part of exceed's expectations.
Government body.
I just wanted to point out one thing before we move on, and it's not a huge discussion matter, but the whole beach promotion line item, that is where the new beach ranger is coming in, so.
Oh, okay.
We have not been able to, instead of we've added expense to the B part fund, because we've added about fifteen thousand dollars to that fund. By adding a person, um, add a couple people around the beach, I just wanted to do that, so if that's a service that you wanted, that is in that one.
Where, where is that line?
The whole beach promotion.
What page?
Fifth line down.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Have we got some applicants, I know, I saw the posting.
We've got, um, so we've got about five good candidates, I'm gonna start interviewing this one.
Okay.
We've actually, I did, have you been doing on Facebook? We also decided we tried to get some more interviewers, yeah, if you could, but I didn't want that to happen, so, but we are getting some good candidates, so, we're gonna start.
So, but, but you know, that just brings, I'm sorry, but, we spent, that's an eighteen thousand dollar budget I'm going forward, so we spent eighteen thousand. What, what was that forty thousand o, o, originally allotted for last year? Cause this ranger program is absolutely brand new.
We spent a lot of stuff on the beach promotions, we need to do a lot of the.
So you're not gonna do eighteen thousand dollars worth in the future, then?
That was not one of the lines I chose to not increase, but cut, you know, basically with, with that increase, because.
Okay.
It, cuts had to come somewhere, I guess, so, the, the big ones.
You're good, so it's a literally a cut, then, uh, okay. Okay, good.
But, uh, general body, government body of administration.
Um, there is a decrease from the debt service, but as, the yearly decrease, it's actually tangible now. Um, the budget of salaries are five percent merit and two and a half percent cola. And the only huge difference in one of them, it's just a new program that the, uh, community has been asking for, um, they'll ask residents to go online and send their accounts.
So, let me understand the five percent merit, is that across?
Yes.
The entire, so some people will get five, some people get four.
Everyone would get two and a half percent cola, and then it would be up to five percent merit rates, based on.
But it's budget, no, not, so it's budgeted at five percent for.
It's budgeted, at, in the, in the budget, it's got a five percent and a seven percent, seven, 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 five percent.
Right, so, so it's seven and a half percent of, what's the entire, twenty, you know?
Twenty-six and twenty.
Twenty-six employees.
And that total cost is about ninety-five thousand dollars. There's twenty-six employees.
And that, that's the cola and the, uh, merit?
The cola specifically in there, obviously for cost of living, and a five percent merit is in there, because, I put the five, I put the two and a half percent cola in there, because employees don't ever get five percent, so I think that everyone deserves at least two and a half percent.
No, that's my question, though, uh, bec, so the way you answered that is confusing, because it's budgeted, so everybody gets five, five percent. Now, some people might get seven, some people might get three, but it's.
No, everyone would get.
Budgeted.
Two and a half percent cola, and then they could get up to a five percent merit.
But you've budgeted at five percent.
But you've budgeted.
Yeah, but you can't, but you can't budget three per person.
I know, I understand, so you, you did an average across twenty-six people of five percent. So everybody, if, if it, if it was even, everybody would get five percent, that's, some people get three, some people get seven, which is what merit is, but, right?
No.
No, cause you, everybody would get seven, everybody got their five percent merit and their two and a half percent cola, they would get seven and a half percent.
And that's what you said was budgeting?
That is what I was questioning.
Yeah. So the two and a half percent is not cola?
That is cola.
That's a cost of living adjustment?
Yes.
I thought, I just heard you say, in case they don't get the five percent pay raise, you wanna make sure they get at least two and a half percent?
Yeah.
So it's not anything to do with the cost of living adjustment?
Well, I mean, it is, cause it's a cola, I mean, we haven't had a cost of living adjustment here, and since I've been here, I've been here for six years, seven years.
So, but, let, let, I mean, you're still confusing me, David, help me, because it's budgeted where, at twenty-six, I'm sorry, it's gonna read that, twenty-six people? Twenty-six times seven and a half of our, of our expense is ninety-five thousand?
Okay, it's twenty-four full-time employees, okay.
Okay.
The two and a half percent cola is everybody, everybody gets, gets a bump, two and a half percent cost of living adjustment.
Yeah.
The five percent merit increase represents a budgeted number over and above the cola that is the maximum available that a person could earn for their merit. So, if someone, someone may get five percent merit, or someone may get one percent merit, but everyone would get two and a half percent cola, cost of living adjustment across the board. That's my understanding of how that would be administered.
Which is why you budgeted.
Five.
Well, I would assume you, I'm, I'm assuming the budget, then, you took everybody's salary and added five percent to it, that's how you come up with the dollars.
That's.
Which means you're gonna, and, and then hopefully you are discriminating against, I'll just put it bluntly, I don't think we have poor performers, but.
I did not.
Merit is based on performance, so whoever awards, let me finish, please, whoever is awarded what? You are gonna have to do some number crunching, because obviously all your salaries aren't the same.
That's right.
Okay, so, but you budgeted per salary five percent and per salary two and a half percent?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so if everybody was the same performance, if everybody got the exact same performance, they would get a seven and a half percent rate?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah. The, uh, and you said you hadn't had a cola in how many years?
I've never seen, I mean, I've, I've been here seven, and I've never seen one, I don't like, I can't speak for the people who've been here for fifteen, twenty years.
I think it was like two thousand eight was the last cost of actual.
Okay.
The living adjustment, and I'm thinking the cost of living has gone up substantially since probably two thousand eight.
So, so, yeah, we can talk about cola right now, if you want, um, but we, wha, what did we do last year?
Nothing.
No, no merit, no cola?
Nothing.
No, nobody got anything.
Okay, and the year before we did a significant.
Equalization, there was an equalization.
Yeah, salary adjustment, I, I would refer that to.
Yes. Yes.
What was the, what was the average increase, based on the equalization?
Probably about fifteen hundred dollars, people who got people.
I mean, percentage wise.
Percentage wise?
Percentage wise.
There was about a hundred thousand dollars, it was, I wanna say a hundred thousand, don't.
I think it was like eighty-five hundred thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, so it.
So it was a seven and s, seven percent raise?
Seven percent raise.
But not everybody got.
Right, I know that.
So we could.
Yeah, my apartment, man, that was definitely the fact, the fact that the new hires, my older one, are pretty much pretty stable.
But that was, that was the same across the board, and both that have been here any, any amount of time, got nothing. That had been here two, three, four years, uh, got adjusted, so that.
Because they were hired low, or?
Both that hadn't been here as long, that got more of a decrease than the both that had some long deal.
Why was?
It kind of puts things closely together, I guess, for that, for that term.
So, the equalization was to equalize the pay between new hires and experienced?
It was a market equalization, uh, based on each job, regardless of.
So it was a salary adjustment?
That's right.
And you adjusted within, so, so just for names, ninety percent? You tried to get everybody within, we used to call it comp ratio, where your.
Absolutely.
Your salary is a percentage of what the.
Yes.
What the market value is?
That's right.
Okay.
I think it was, suit that mid-range, I think.
Yes.
So, so my reaction to that, and I, I, we weren't here, right, that was before us, was, that's another example, and, but it was on our budget, but they had passed it. That's another example of not doing anything for a long time and passing a buck. Uh, and, and.
Oh, um, the.
And, and.
The personnel actions, the, the res, net result was, is that, um, the town employees, by class of employees, were, salaries were adjusted to a market comparable in a median range.
And I have no problem with that, because, as you know, we just, we just did the same thing for the town manager's salary, so it's not, you know, a big secret. Did the exact same thing, so we, we, we made up for something that was not done for a long time to do, do the right thing. But, but, um, my general reaction, and so, so that was only two years ago, so the, so the salaries are, should be, and if not, should be corrected. My general reaction to a, a two and a half cola and a five percent merit is, wow. Typically, I, you know, I know people, two, two percent is, is the industry norm now. Merit, merit, um, most people don't get any, you know, you know cola is, so combining the two, you know, I, I'm all for merit increases, but five percent on top of a two and a half percent cola?
But the thing is, no one ever, the thing about the statement I'm trying to make without being harsh or snotty, I guess, is the right word. Um, no one ever sees five percent, that's the, that's the reason why the two and a half is in there, because only a couple people that I ever known have gotten five percent.
That's because they're, they're, they're not merited to see that, that's the answer, that's how a merit system works.
Okay, so.
Cause we just went through ten minutes of discussing that, right, that, go ahead.
Okay.
Coming from industry, the way we would have dealt with it is, we would say, you can have a merit increase at the discretion of management of up to, from between zero and five percent, but the merit budget you are given is two percent, for you to decide how, I think what happens is, when you do it the way you're doing it, you have misrepresented the amount of money that is necessary, and I think that's what people are reacting to.
Well, I have about ten other ways, if you would like to discuss those, where I run the numbers. So if you gave everyone a three percent cola, that would only be a thirty thousand dollar increase in the budget, that's for twenty-four employees. Um, a three and a half percent cola would be thirty-eight thousand dollars for twenty-four employees, a four percent cola would be a forty-four thousand dollar increase in employees. So, those are numbers that I have ran, I have them all on my computer, so we can discuss different scenarios, however you would like.
Right, we understand it, where, just one question, we did the, where do, what's the average, the employee, uh, where the, what's the average where the employee stands against their market salary?
The range?
Their market.
Cause in the mid.
They're, they're in, they're in the fiftieth percent high, in the, in the, at, at the bell curve, that, when we normalize them, they're a b, by class of employee, they're about at fifty percent.
So do you have, you have a number of people under it?
Now, what I'm asking is, where does.
They should be about right.
We have, we have a salary band for each.
Yes.
Each job function, where does the average employee stand relative to their job function? Cause it's typically ninety percent is what you hire in at, and your experienced employees are typically at a hundred and five, hundred and ten percent, I mean, that's, that's the comp ratio. So where are your, where are the employees right now relative to that scale?
We're, we're about at the midpoint, that's what we did with the, the normalization.
So they're, so they're between ninety and a hundred percent?
No, they're at mid-range.
Well, the mid-range, that's what a comp ratio's, your market value is.
We'd have to be somewhere around mid-range, you don't, you, I heard you were saying you could bring them up within a few seasons, I've been here for thirteen years, so we didn't need that far out of the gap.
That's typical, though, too.
I would think, but I don't know.
Well, the reason I'm asking is, that's what cola's about, that's where your, your, typically, a range is adjusted up or down based on consumer price index and other factors, regional as well as national. So, and if you aren't adjusting, I just heard you hadn't had a cola in s, seven years?
Ten.
Then typically you would expect to see that comp ratio depressed down to like eighty percent of, of banned, that's what I'm getting at. So I'm just trying to understand where, if we really hadn't had a cola in that long, now, a, actually, though.
But we've had an adjustment, though.
The inflation rate for sixteen was one point three percent, that, that is expected to be three percent in seventeen. Uh, I would, I believe that, uh, inflation rate year to year, but preceding that, was less than one percent, possibly half a percent or whatever. I'm just trying to get a grasp of, what is it we're trying to correct, and how much are we trying to correct it? And, um, if it was just adjusted two years ago, we should've adjusted it up to, well, did we adjust it up to, you said mid-range, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, the, that cola, I believe, is probably, um, correlated to the southeast C P I. I believe that's the, for the se, consumer price index, that's, I believe that's what, uh, normally we try to correlate that to.
Was that last year's calc?
It's probably the first quarter of this year, Mandy, do you know, do you remember what that is?
I don't.
Cause usually the, the, usually those are last year's data that you're compensating for when you do a cola.
So are we saying that locally, we have three or four times the national average of cost of living increase? Because last year I got nothing on a federal paycheck, because there was no growth, this, this year I got a point three percent, suggesting there was like six, point six percent across the board nationally?
H- historically, when we've recommended cost of living adjustments, they've been directly pegged to that, uh, C P I for the southeast, the most recent data that, that's available. And sometimes it's been, it's been recommended at two percent or two point three percent.
Recommended do with, sir, most people are recommending a two and a half or three, um, percent cola in the budgets issue for employees.
We have, we're gonna entertain questions or comments.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Just as a point of information, prior boards, once they did away with giving cost of living adjustments, gave bonuses for separate years, one-time bonuses, just so you know that, it wasn't like no money.
There, that was one year.
There, there was, there was more than one year, there, there's, there's been a couple of three times, uh, there, there were several occasions.
So that's like a merit, though, uh, that's a one-time merit?
Well, those, those bonuses were, mm, um, they did not increase the salary, so the salary didn't, the salary rates didn't keep up with the market. So the salary didn't, the salary rates didn't keep up with the market.
Said there were ones that.
That's it.
And it didn't increase your base.
But it was money in the pot.
Understood, understood.
Yep, because David, if we did the hundred thousand dollar increase now in salaries, what would the attached costs be? All the additional costs that are tied to salaries. Healthcare, FICA.
They're in your package.
Well, have you done the math?
What's that come out?
You did the ninety five thousand dollar math. Have you done the other math?
Is it fifty percent of that, seventy five percent, a hundred percent?
No, they're each different. One sixty, one seven, one six five, one seven, two point ten.
We're talking about. You're talking about the embedded costs.
Oh, the other embedded costs.
FICA, retirement. Your pension.
If you, if you.
I'm looking at insurance going up over twenty percent.
Wanted to swag a number.
We need you to talk into the mic.
That's another whole, not related.
When we, when I put the numbers in the budget, those all reflect, the, the paper that you have, that reflects those.
Yeah, we understand. What we're looking at is, is the total number. It's better to talk percentages because a seven and a half percent increase against salary typically benefits are at least forty percent in addition to that. Because the, and the reason, reason we're asking is if you reduce the salary, you also reduce that part. So it's not just salaries we're talking about.
Yeah, so, so example, look at page seven. It, you know, salaries is that line that you're talking about, right? The first line. Overtime, for example, is affected. If you increase the salary by seven and a half percent, the overtime is going to be affected. FICA, if you increase the, so we're just asking for the grand total, like you gave us the grand total of ninety five thousand for the salary line. We're looking for the grand total of, uh, FICA, retirement, overtime, um.
The overtime's not changed.
Yeah, overtime is, but it, it does change because it's a percentage of, of, uh, the new salary, right? But, but just a FICA and, and, uh, whatever's related, retirement, uh, you could even say 401K employer match. So that, you know, they're all, they're all tied to a, to your new salary, right? And there's related increase in.
Well, the budget is a hundred and, if we just take your totals for administration expenses, the budget reflects a hundred and forty eight thousand, five hundred dollars increase. The lion's share of that's got to be what we're asking about, cause the rest of these are incidentals.
Well, this number at the top here, this seventeen, this three ninety one, this one at the top, that is a little inflated because of the new salary increase of our town manager. And I put his, I put in his numbers as well as the rest of the employees. So when you add seven percent to his new salary, that makes that number a lot higher. So that actually is inflated number unless he, unless he is.
So that's how you get to a thirty three percent increase in salaries?
Yeah, that's, so this actually has a lot more in it because of, when you add the seven percent to thirty, you know, it just is a lot more.
Yeah, but you, you're saying the town manager. Did you say town manager today?
Well, yeah, I'm just looking at my spreadsheet here. You know, when you add, when you add seven percent to his new salary, that's why the admin line was.
Yeah, but I would, I would remove that because.
I did, I did. For me, it just hasn't been updated in your package.
Okay, cool, cool, cool. Yeah, cause it went up a hundred and one thousand dollars, which was.
Yeah, but if you, I, there is a, I have taken it out somewhere. I just didn't update the spreadsheet for you.
What, what's your new number then?
It's ten thousand less.
Okay.
Three eighty.
So my point is so is FICA less, so is group insur- uh, not group insurance, so is retirement, so is, yeah, okay.
John, in answer your question previously, what I call the taxes tags entitled that go along with the salary, the FICA, that kind. About twenty percent if you just did a rough, rough order of magnitude.
So another twenty thousand dollars on the ninety five thousand.
And, and that's not, that's not including group insurance, you know, until we actually plug the salary line item into and, and run the formulas there.
The formulas are, are in there.
Now. And those, those factors are going to be different for the police department.
Right, right.
Against our, not only do they ha- they have a different work week.
Yep.
But they also have a, a different, um, uh, contribution to, uh, a couple of their things are different. Retirement's different, 401K's different.
So you're looking for the board's observation or comments on this now, David? On this proposal?
Yeah, we need an up or down on what you want us to do with that, um, regardless of what the numbers are, if they're favorable to that. You know, uh, we'll, we'll include it. If you're not, we, we'll, we'll take it out.
Before we get there, do the department heads, I think I heard this earlier, department heads, you apply your merit based on performance? Okay.
I do an evaluation and the final factor on what that proves is that it's a danger.
Yeah, but you don't give, whatever we approve, you don't give everybody the same amount. You, you discriminate based on performance.
Well, it's criteria based. Probably, uh, best anybody in the department, even with a good school, would probably, uh, two to a half.
Some are happier than others.
That's why it's called merit.
That's the world.
Yeah. You know, we were spending a lot of time on salary here, but you know, most research shows that, uh, compensation in terms of a motivator is very short-lived. The bigger compensate, the bigger motivators are job satisfaction, developmental opportunities, feedback, you know, those kinds of things and.
Now, a small department like I got.
Having said that, there's still money in people's pockets, um.
A small department like I got, uh, too much to do, or got a lot to do, and I can't, I, I don't got the slack. It's, it's a tough game, but I have it. So, you know, I know people play, well, talk to live raise. That affects everybody. Everybody don't deserve it, but, you know, I got somebody in my department that preserve land. I need to go on that road.
What's our, what's our turnover rate?
I think we're all in the same, but, um, I don't think I've ever been turned over in probably five years. Um, it took ten or eleven years to get to that point.
Before that, it was high?
I've got, I've got excellent, excellent staff. Uh, they work hard. I hope they all stay till I leave. That would, that, that's my goal, is that they all stay till I leave. Um.
Our goal is that they stayed.
I understand.
Um, after you leave.
So, uh, to, to answer your question for a while, um, the police department Holden Beach served as a training ground. That, that, they really served as a training ground. You get them, hire them in cheek, tr- train them up.
And somebody else steals the wife.
Yeah.
Well, I think, if it's okay, I think I would take a shot at each of the five of us might make an observation and mine would be that given the scenario, I could buy the two and a half percent increase, a budget of that, but not seven and a half percent. So that's my take to the, to base. Seven and a half percent would be just out of line with what I think everybody else is experiencing in the country and in the county. Uh, and I myself am experiencing. So I would say I would be okay with a two and a half percent budgeted number across the board that you would exercise, call it whatever you want.
Um, okay, I'll give my opinion. Uh, based, and I, I'm in that range, two and a half, three, only based that we did two years, we did a, an adjustment. And only based on going forward, we need to maintain the, uh, salaries, not falling into, into the same mode that we did before and let years or year, year and year and year pass with the salaries, um, you know, get out of, out of whack. So.
Ms. Kaiser?
I'd say two and a half to three percent would be.
Ms. Royal?
How you split it up, that would be?
Yeah, I.
Uh.
I agree, COLA or merit, either way.
Well, it all comes out of the same pocket. Either way, the, the salaries will increase. This, this is base pay adjustment. Um, and hearing that department heads are, uh, using discretion to award it based on performance, I'd be fine with three, three percent.
Okay, Ms. Eisenhower?
So you, you think you need a COLA and a merit?
One, one number.
No, we're just saying three percent.
Just one number, percentage wise. What do they call it?
Everybody flat.
No.
It would be budgeted for three, what, it would be budgeted for three percent. They take the total salaries of paying now, add three percent, then the department heads would appropriate that based on merit. But the total increase would not exceed three percent of the salaries.
So that does give some opportunity for merit?
Is everybody up to?
I don't know.
Yeah, if you do it COLA, everybody gets the same thing.
Everybody just gets.
Yeah, and that, and if I could, if I could tell you that number, the salary increase for that number is thirty three thousand dollars for twenty four employees. That'll give, that'll just give you the number.
Yeah, I don't have preference between COLA or merit. I, I lived in the merit world, but it's a different world. So I'd leave that up to David to.
It, it, it's important that y'all make a distinction one way or the other because of the way it's administered.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend it be a three percent merit. Because the salaries adjustments were made two years ago, is what I heard. So and when you did that, you in essence, you call it what it was, but it sounded, it was a market adjustment, so it would have included COLA and other factors. So I would call it merit to be applied.
In the past, has this been separated between your salary and the staff's salary?
Hmm, no.
Because they got salary increases and you didn't get them for.
Yes, that's, yes.
He administers them, or you approve them?
I, I, I only adjudicate the staff. The board um, manages my salary.
But your salary is included in the.
Right.
Calculate.
Yeah, that's right.
It should be a separate line item because we voted.
It is separate. I have, I mean, it's in that one line item in our budget, but it is separate on this.
But even in the budget, you know, you, because, you know, we voted a different percentage increase for the town manager than what we're discussing now.
And I th- I think that's important because the, the public's perception is going to be, and, and this would be unfair to our town manager. They could walk away saying, oh, you just awarded him another raise. Well, that's, it's not what we're doing.
Well, what, what I'd suggest that you do is, is, um, that in administration, if three percent is the merit pool that you'd want to establish, but for, you, you know, across, across the board for all functions, is that, um, is that it be understood that the manager's salary is excluded from that calculation. That's what I'm hearing from.
There you go.
Yeah. We flatlined the managers.
Yep, that's a good way of ministry.
Is that?
Yep.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm understanding that, um, what, what we're to calculate off of is a three percent merit pool. And flatline manager stuff, just not.
Yeah, excluding your.
Excluding, yeah, okay.
So can I do, or, cause it's, I'll probably be the one doing this exercise, so I just want to be clear. So you're willing to put in a three percent merit, up to three percent. So that means that, where is everyone going to get three percent?
No, no.
Budgeted that three percent.
We're budgeting three percent based on the salaries of everyone excluding the town manager.
That's the budget pool.
That's, that's your dollar amount. The expectation is, is that that would be awarded based on performance and you can use up all of that money, but no more than that. So that means.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to, I'm trying to say, so, so someone could get one percent.
Exactly. In fact, you look at it this way, if they were making the same amount of money, if one person in, in one department is awarded a three percent merit, I mean, a one percent merit, now let me put it the other way. If someone's awarded a four percent merit, that means the other person can only get two percent. If they're making the same salary. That's how it works. That make sense?
Yeah.
It's all got to bounce out to be that.
I just wanted to be clear.
The total dollars will be, will not exceed three percent of the existing salaries that you're going to budget for. Um. Move along. I had one other thought. I'm sure it'll come back to me later, but. Oh, oh. I thought I did see something that almost looked like a bonus line item or the recognition. Do we have some type of individual, let me get to this one and, uh, is there some?
Talking about rewards and wellness.
Yeah, yeah.
On page seven.
That's it.
Five up from the bottom.
Is that, is that a line item to reward employees for ex- exceptional performance that's like a bonus or a?
We haven't used that line item for that in a while. Actually, what she's taking out of wellness right now is our, um, the, the first aid kit. So that's our wellness program right there is our first aid kit.
Okay.
I'm taking CPR out of there.
As CPR.
CPR should come out of training. Got it. Anyway, my point is, my point is, uh, back to the compensation thing, you know, recognition and, uh, I, I would encourage using, and that's two thousand dollars, I would encourage you looking at rewards for targeted, uh, accomplishments that, that deserves some tangible reward as well as, you know, publicizing it and letting other staff members know. That's where the discretionary effort typically comes from when you, when people feel that their efforts are rewarded.
That used to be a program with somebody that for additional training or something, say, I said, if I want to get board license or something like that.
Yeah, I understand that, but that's misappropriating funds for training for rewards.
Reward, you know, get, there's no examples. I might run a pre right here and put a saying that's up in Perry Road, which is here down there, the backside of ten house lake, and I'd like to give a little about that and stuff like that.
Yeah, okay.
That's not what you're talking about?
Yeah, I'm talking about rewarding someone for above and beyond and it's targeted to the, to exactly what they did and it's timely. You know, it's.
Police officer delivers a baby on the side of the road.
There you go. That's, that would be a good one.
That's, that's the type of thing you're talking about.
Yeah. You know, uh, typically it's, in, in this environment, I would expect a lot of it would come from, you know, some, the public came in and said, you know, Jack really did a fantastic job and they've got specific comments, but it, as importantly, it could be other, other staff members also saying that. Tim, you had a question? Huh? You sure? All right. Uh.
Other items you want to discuss?
The group insurance went up by twenty one percent. That's the fourth line item down. What was that based on?
Our insurance went up thanks to Obamacare, so.
No, it went down. I read the news.
No, we did not. Not our quote at least. Um, the past few years, we've actually maintained it. You haven't seen it go up because we've maintained it by taking away insurance from employees. I didn't do that this year. I mean, we could do that, but we had to take deductibles and gone up, co-insurance, the everything. Everything that could increase, we've increased over the past few years.
So bring, just for me, our system does have deductibles?
Yes.
And copays?
Sure does.
And where are you in copays now? Do you know ballpark?
Um, the copay for a doctor's office visit, I believe, is thirty dollars. Fifty is for.
Specialist, specialist.
Specialist, it's thirty dollars, I believe, for a regular doctor's appointment.
And what's your deductible?
A hundred dollars.
The, the deductible, I believe, is, um, I think we went up to three thousand dollars for individual. And then for family, I believe it's, it's four or five thousand dollars. Sorry, I didn't bring it with me, but yeah.
I wa- I wasn't aware of that. Thank you.
What, what's the? What, what's the, so, I'm completely, what's the burden sharing, so, does an employee, if it's just an employee, does the town pay for all the insurance?
Correct, the town pays for a full employee and it pays for the percentage of, of family members, you could be your spouse, your children, so...
What, what is that percentage?
It's about eighty percent, um, honestly, it's kind of been in there since before all of us were here, so we've kinda just moved it along as we've gotten the increases, we've kinda just moved it along in the same kind... I don't know where they originally came up with it, but it's about eighty percent of the payment.
So, so, uh, an employee plus one pays how, how much for...
Well, nowadays, we used to be able to do it that way.
On an eighty-twenty plan, basically?
Well, it, it's completely different, honestly, um, Wally and his wife, they're older than me and my children, you pay more for Wally and his wife than you would for my entire family. Obamacare did that to us, it used to be a set amount for each group, and they don't do that anymore. And we don't feel, we don't wanna get into age discrimination, so what we do is we lump it.
Yeah, that's the cost, you're talking about the cost, I'm talking about what an employee pays. So, he pays the same amount, so what you just described is Wally pays the same amount as a, as a younger employee and their spouse.
You know, the top of your merit?
And, I'm, I'm sorry, you get paid once a month?
Twice.
Twice a month? So one eighteen, so two, two forty, two thirty-eight?
This, th- th- this is a, given the status of the Affordable Care Act, this is probably a bad year to be looking at what health premiums are. But certainly, um, well, it's gonna require an evaluation by a lot of folks, um, and it, so, I guess, uh, do we have a...
It's been a, it's been a juggling act for...
Yeah.
For the last four years, really, with the unknowns of Obamacare, the repeal, maybe, it, it's a juggling.
Right, right.
But that affects the market, I mean, we're not Obamacare, are we?
No, it's just, but we...
Right, affects the general market, understood, what's, so that's a couple, what's the, uh, my, my understanding, what's the family?
Well, it affects the market unless you're, I came from a company that, that's, was, uh, self-funded.
Right.
And they, there was no, they didn't contract out to a company, we paid expenses directly and then just paid Blue Cross to administer it.
To administer.
But anyway, it's still...
In the past two, and we just didn't feel really confident about moving in that direction, we've looked at the state healthcare system, um, we've looked at, we have a broker, so each year he does give me different prices for different companies, and we solicit outside the broker, just so we know what other people are doing also, so we do look at all the options each year.
What's a family, then, what's a family's monthly?
The, um, I think she told you the family, I actually have my whole family on there, I'm not sure, so the other would be the children.
So two. Yeah, for, okay, okay.
And then the children, and then there's just the children.
And that's a five thousand dollar annual, um, deduction limit? Or, uh, you got a co-pay and then, uh, your deductibles?
I think it's four or five.
Five, four, five, yeah.
Yeah, so two, two thirty-eight for the family, right? You, you realize that that's extremely generous, um...
You have a choice, you don't have to, there's probably about half the employees only, employee only.
Right.
To use it. Yeah, sure, 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 even, that is... A- a- and, and employees, normally employees, yeah, you, you know, you pay ninety percent, eighty, eighty, ninety percent, but then the family gets really touchy, because I, I, you know, the teachers, I'll tell you exactly what, on a family program for a teacher in this county, I, we pay six hundred and seventy-five dollars a month, a teacher.
With similar deductibles?
Uh, no, higher, higher deductibles.
Yeah.
No, no, actually...
That drives the market?
It drives the market.
That law drives the market.
It drives the market, right, well, right, yep.
When we look at the salary and the, um, the benefits that the league puts out every year, pretty much every town does cover employees' full costs.
Yep, yep, yep.
And it does differ between towns and counties, whether they'll pay for the family amounts or not, um, it's been that way, I've, I've been here for fourteen years, it's been that way since I've been here, so that's been a benefit that I've been getting that long, so yes, I know what you're coming to, but then that does come to me as a reduction, I look at pay as a compensation package.
Absolutely.
Yep, that's what it is.
So to me, that is what you're looking at.
Yep.
Plus my kids. But yes, we do look at that every year.
Yeah, but, and I agree with you a hundred percent, because we wouldn't even, I wouldn't even bring this subject up if we didn't make a, if there wasn't a salary adjustment recently made.
Right.
Because, you know, it is a total compensation, totally agree with you, but we made that salary adjustment.
To me, and you gotta realize, a lot of these people out here, I've been here fourteen years, pretty much all those guys in the audience have been here longer than me, so, I mean, we've all been here a long time. Well, yeah, we're together, right, that's... Just the moderate have been here a long time.
So you haven't, you didn't realize that salary adjustment, is that what you're saying?
Oh, I sure did, yeah, he brought me up to me, and I appreciate that, and I'm happy with that, definitely.
Okay, to me.
Ready for the next line item, or?
Sure.
The, one thing I don't want to...
I'd like to...
The unintended consequence of really looking at the budget line by line item is that, that people can walk away with the impression that we're, we're taking money away from those who are directly contributing to the success. And, uh, I'm satisfied with what we've already done with merit, I'm not, I don't... I, I'm reluctant for us to take other cuts here because it is all compensation in one form or another, but that's, that's just where I am right now.
I, I'd like to know, though, where we fall compared to other...
Yeah.
Communities.
Have we done a peer comparison to see where Holden Beach is compared to our neighboring, and is, are we in...
In terms of, uh...
Compensation.
Insurance and compensation.
Insurance.
About the midpoint, you know, and, and in terms of compensation, just salaries, we're about the midpoint, um, in terms of benefits, we're in line with what other, what other local governments do, um, small local governments, surprisingly, uh, are more inclined to provide more benefits than they are salaries, which is, um, you know, kind of an eye opener for me. But, um, to, to your point about, uh, folks walking away with, you know, taking away from folks, I, I don't, that may be people walking out the door, I'm not taking it that way, I'm looking at as the board is really, um, becoming, uh, more intimate with some of the specifics in there, and, and, you know, that, that's what I'm taking.
Uh, I, for one, I'm really just looking for, to understand.
Yeah.
And, and take the retirement package, on administrative there, it goes up by forty, almost forty percent. What drives that?
And, and that's a direct, uh, function of the, um, salary line item increase, that's a fractional, um, relationship, everybody's enrolled in the North Carolina local government retirement system, and in addition to it being tied to it, it actually went up a few basis points, didn't it? The contribution, um, the mandatory contribution actually went up, uh, a, a couple of basis points.
So they're taking it out of the local municipally, municipalities?
Well, all counties too, all, all local government.
Okay, so the increase, the, the basis points increase.
And that's, and that's, that is directed by the state treasurer.
Unemployment compensation has nothing, is that, is that just because the template had unemployment compensation on?
Previously, um, the, the law changed on unemployment compensation, and it was a fractional rider, now, um, we, our pool is where our pool is, and it's only based on claims made, and we, we hadn't had any claims.
Oh, okay, so you still need it as a line item, we just don't need to fund it?
What it was, was this spreadsheet was taken from a spreadsheet about this long, and, and the back years had, had an expense in it.
If nobody else, on page nine? We've got a series of expenses toward the bottom that we haven't come close to, we're not gonna spend the money that was in the budget, and we've just repeated the budget, is that just a convenient thing, or...
The capital out of equipment is for these, uh, vehicle lease purchase, so that's why that's the same amount. Do you want to speak with Wally about, for equipment, he's looking for?
I mean, if gas, oil, and tires were at twenty-eight-five, and we only spent thirteen, will we need twenty-eight-five next year, is that gonna go up double?
Jesus, gonna answer.
My thing was, I didn't ask for any. I didn't ask for any increases in anything in my budget, cost of course, period.
But you didn't, you didn't decrease anything that you weren't spending? Got you.
Yes, so, I, I think that's the...
That doesn't mean it won't decrease, as Bob said, having gone through all that, that is all together.
And we move to police?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the items that are way low will be cut, it's essentially what I'm saying.
I get the sense from the board that the, the desire is, that the attitude be, can we compress it as much as we can, not to be careless with the money? We've already...
I'm, I'm prepared, I'm not, I'm not up again, I'm not asking for anything, that's what I said, and I see items that can be cut, and I'm all for cutting, that's not a problem.
Yeah.
That's the attitude we're looking for.
I, I can give you a, a, for example, on, and I know this, Wally tell me I'm wrong, department supplies and, and materials, the ten grand, we spent twenty-eight hundred so far, that's, that's probably because we haven't bought bullets for, for the armor yet and gone out and done the, the firing, and that, that's a specific, that's a specific...
We, we actually prefer you not shoot the people, so...
Well, you, you still have to stay proficient, you gotta burn a lot of lead, but, but that's a, yeah, you still gotta...
But, but I still think Christie made an attempt, and a pretty good attempt, you know, you can't tell me that, you, you, you can't reduce the budgets for the following year that you haven't spent half of it for. That, that's, that's the, that's the, and that's the direction, Wally, I mean, and, and that's the direction for, for everybody, because, and some are justifiable, understood, you know, some are not linear, um, but I would say most of them, you know, maintenance of vehicles, seventeen hundred, seven thousand budget, that you didn't spend most of it, so I, I, the expectation is to, to, to meet a more realistic budget based on spent, three quarters spent, uh, of previous budget.
Well, I mean, the flip side to not having spent maintenance and repair budget this year is you gonna need to spend it next year, because you, we've, we've, we've avoided something or haven't done something, I mean, that's the, the flip side of it, and...
We in this group were fortunate in that our replacement program has finally caught up.
That's right.
And so, a lot of the vehicles, the ones are still under warranty, so if something does go bad, it's big, it's a warranty.
So then, so then why, so...
As the year, as the years, as the years go by.
We could argue this for a little...
Well, and, and you know, and, and part of this is, um, it is, 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 is important that the board have the dialogue, you know?
And because if you put another column on fifteen, sixteen, it would be the same, I'll guarantee it. So, okay, that's the, that's the message.
So hopefully what you're hearing is that, that, that the, the best way to manage a budget is to allocate what you need month by month, plan your expenses out, because we don't want, for example, police cars to, to break down in the middle of a, of a chase, we want them to be well-maintained, and you maintain them as you need to, so hopefully all departments are doing that. This is not an exercise in save the money till fourth quarter and then rush out and do what you need to do.
Right.
We want it to be month by month, so that you're funded appropriately, and you're able to perform your duties safely and efficiently. Ready to move on from police, or we...
I think you got the message, right? Thank you.
Building and inspections, I was, I saw, I guess, uh, cut contractor services in half, what was that?
Every, every year we get contractor services where we actually have to go out by profession and do things. At one time, that, that part of the budget, it was high, thirty-eight thousand, um, I usually budget that based on what I foresee is coming in the future, just like we would do in the other budget, watching me, I know of one project where we may have to spend money that is extremely light, the party we've already done.
Okay.
We're working on a Point West storefront issue, uh, the same as marker fifty-five, it's the same thing, we have some professional services going in the cage, that cost the town about ten thousand dollars. Last year, this money was in there, it was brought forth from, was the thought that we may have to do the same thing that we did the year before, which was the twenty-five thousand dollars that tore down the Capitol大楼, so that is monies that get spent to, to perform specific duties that we know are upcoming, now it may be more than that, if we run into another project, it could be more than that, but I try to cut the budget where I knew that I could specifically form a finger at what would happen and what wouldn't.
Okay, so you'll be able to meet your duties with what you proposed?
And, and also...
Well, I, 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 I don't know that.
Well, you, it's your best estimate.
Right, it's what I know, Tim.
It's a budget, right?
I, I would like to point out for the, for the board's benefit, is that also in inspections, there are specific legal expenses that we incur in there, and whenever we consult with the attorney, we bill those expenses to this line item, just because of the, of the nature of the technical things that building inspections deals with. So, um, the board has a professional services line item that's crafting ordinances and, and paying all, but when there are specific inspections, planning, development, and zoning-related expenses that we have to, um, have Noel to look at, that costs, those services are billed to that cost center. So it's, it's more than just engineering and survey-type services.
Yeah, a good example would be if we had an appeal on a variance.
Yep.
Then they, then the board of adjustments would use the town's attorney, we'd have to have a very...
Yeah.
Got it.
Tim, in yours, what advertising would you be doing?
We do a lot of advertising, matter of fact, we, well, we, we, we have to do some advertising for the FEMA stuff, we have to do up pamphlets and that kind of stuff, that's part of your NFIP program, or that we get points for, keep your insurance, your blood insurance rates down.
Right.
Is that we have to have pamphlets and dialogues with the, with the, with the public.
So, but you didn't... You budgeted this year, but you didn't spend anything?
Well, we, typically what happens is, is we, we don't know when they're going to, or when we're going to actually do that, we've actually done it this year, I don't know if it somehow managed to come out another line item, didn't we send out flyers over to this year? Yeah, sometimes it gets put under training, but we do advertise, but we also have the flyers that we hand out, and we also do training for the contractors information meeting that we do every year, there's training involved in that as well, and then of course, there's other things too, for, for advertising. If I go out and post a piece of property, we have a piece of property that's posted now, we advertise that twice for notification, if I have to post a piece of property for condemnation, then we advertise that, that line item actually almost got used one year when I did twenty-two or twenty-three condemnation, so, because we have to advertise those for proper notification and we want.
Thanks.
It could get used or it couldn't get used, but, but my budget's based on a five-year trend, my revenues are done the same way, based on the fact that our stuff goes up and down. The good news is, and we talked about revenues earlier, the good news is, is that we are actually trending up when I said we were gonna trend down, because of the new law, for some reason it's not affecting us. I don't know if people don't know what the law is, but it ain't affecting us, we're actually going.
On the revenue side?
It, it's just powering, the work's just powering. So that's going. Um, the travel and training, travel and training will be higher this year than, than it was last year. Reason being is, is that, uh, for the past couple of years, oh, ever since I've been here, really, um, and that line item's going down every year, by the way. But since I've been here, I always volunteered for the NCPIA to teach, and they pay for, uh, a full ban, a, a full banquet of my stays and some of my expenses for travel and training, because I teach for them. I'm not doing that next year. Um, last year I had health issues and it was a big strain on me. Um, I've got to make, on me, and I've done, I feel like I've volunteered enough to help other people, but they actually picked up the tab on some of my travel and training. Ron didn't get to do as much travel and training as I normally like, I lo, I'm, I'm, I'm sort of like, uh, what Ashley was talking about before, I think that if you, uh, as long as you keep people involved, and keep them developing, and, and keep them where they're comfortable with their job, especially for training. I'm always a big educator, and so I have to figure that out, I mean, people in the contract. But that was not as high because she couldn't go because I was sick last summer, so there was some training that she didn't get to that she was wanting to get there. I'm very reluctant to cut that line item, because it has to be cut every year. Um, maintenance and B, the average age of B was my department, was almost nine years. And we, we're, there's, we just had a big deduction, uh, on that line item, or should have, Ron had just had her truck in the shop for a week. After having it out on the beach for the last ten years, the four-wheel drive completely seized up, so I'm not sure what the total cost of that bill's gonna be, but we had to get it fixed. Um, so that, that, that's gonna be pretty close to what we need. Um, gas, oil and tires, well, gas is, it's almost half as cheap as now as it was when I first got here, so if you base it off of my, my trends, you know, I mean, that may be a little high, but I don't know how high it would be. Um, uh, if you, if you didn't average out, it probably wouldn't be much different, you know what I mean, but I could, want to cut that one some.
What's your equipment purchase line?
Uh, equipment purchase line, uh, I've been carrying that one over two years, we've been planning on getting a blotter, we talked about earlier about having GIS at, at systems. Well, you gotta have a way to map, you gotta have a way to see the maps and look at the maps, as y'all well know, how many times have we needed to be able to pull out a big map? But we don't have that capability. We had it all ready to purchase last year, and of course, I was saying one time I got sick, so it kind of fell to the wayside, but I had already fired that, that buggy back up. And I'm either gonna spend it this year, or I'm gonna spend it next year to get that, to get that piece of equipment.
And the, the other thing that kicks in there too is all three computers in that department are aged now.
Well, the, the, that fifteen hundred and ninety-five dollars we bought one of the.
Okay.
Uh, the hunger recovery fund, that's revolving door, money pays in, money pays out. That's just a guesstimate of how much we're gonna actually take in, a ten dollars a dime to pay back out. That is a deed that is part of for the hunger, for the contractors, hospital board, that we're required to take in by law, per, per certain types of construction. We can't keep one dollar, they keep nine.
Thanks, Tim.
Yep, great. I'm good.
Public Works. Public Works actually has dropped their budget three sixty-five to three fifty-three.
So, does that mean some services were also cut? That's what we've been hearing?
No, some of that, like, unfortunately, probably be acts of street paving, or, or street paving schedule, I put this year, I put a hundred and seventy thousand, but I mean, I think last year, fuck, one nineteen. The rest was thirteen last year, so that's what caused the, oh, street paving problems, that's probably a little bit of it. There's a few places, there are not many of them, but they're shaved, a little off.
The, you, Point West issue with the flooding, is that coming out of your department?
Uh, we say, is flooding coming out of my department?
Well, I mean.
You talk about smaller legal services or anything?
Yeah, yeah.
That would be probably, we had today, but you probably answered it, as far as I'm aware.
But, uh, Chris, you had a three sixty-five budget and you've only spent one forty, three-fourths of the way through the year. But you, you expect you're gonna be over two hundred by the end of the year? Is there anything coming up in the next couple of months?
Not a big ticket I, I think of, but let me just use this for, um, example here, if I'm in the right. Maintenance or repair of boat keys, I actually have, we usually, that fifteen thousand dollars would be incredible, I want a boat key. But I actually have two right now that need to be replaced, and they're actually, they're qualified for FEMA reimbursement, and I'll send them to another five thousand dollars before we carry through that, so I probably have to move them somewhere. Another place to look at where it looks like we have to do anything, is sidewalk repairs, five thousand dollars, and I was spending four hundred and ten dollars, so that's pretty much five thousand dollars. You don't get a whole lot of repairs, you know, I don't really know from time to time, I really feel like I run a pretty tight budget here, at the same time, I know you look for it to be tighter, but I had to run it through every time, but I need twenty cent, now somebody knows we have a budget. And here, something other to be able to follow through, but I've never been in the practice of just being, it just goes clear, and it does go back in the foot for dealing with, like, your bum balance.
But you look like you're coming, gonna come in a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars under budget this year.
If you look at the second line item up, the street paving projects, they haven't done that yet this year.
That's gonna, that's gonna be, that's gonna get, probably a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, right there.
A hundred and twenty?
Probably so, I think that, or an accident number, the numbers come back on the table, maybe somebody else.
Yeah, you're probably gonna end up spending about a hundred thousand dollars out of that, when you include the engineering services in, on, and contract administration in on top of that. The con, the actual construction work was eighty-two, that, I think we did the other.
How about the street drainage projects with the, what's the story in that, Chris?
I don't have anything that make it, and so now it means a year, but that's a pretty small, no one would consider what you made. You did have something that you did, it was pretty, rather be small, like, uh, what I pointed out to, maybe no one would have paid to lose streets, or, or our streets conditions survey. As far as regular maintenance and repair, ten thousand dollars a year, well, we, we scraped it by, I mean, I extended this year, but I still do, I still have some patching right now, that I've got to carry through, um, probably in the next few weeks. That's a pretty good size, and I just want to arrange your street, drones we have, you can actually use sunny witness the highway, you buy an asphalt, call them a little bit further.
S- street drainage projects, that, that'd probably pay for a couple of culverts on, on, on pieces of pipe and actually, um, if, especially if we had the contract to work out. I mean, that's what that line item usually is.
Yeah, but, you know, so we're trying to, you know, we're trying to introduce a new, if, if you got something, I, I, that, that's great, if you don't, don't, you know, we don't need to budget for next year, so.
Well, those, those type of things, when culverts break, they break and they need to be fixed, so that's, that represent, that represents capability, uh, instead of, of an improvement kind of thing.
Okay.
Why is there a, a, a line item for travel and then one for travel and training?
Are, are you in a, the sanitation line versus the streets line?
Yeah.
That's just different. It's a different employee.
Gotcha.
So the pavement, are we paving Ranger upcoming?
I think it's on the, actually, front of it, so.
It's in the front, yeah. Yeah, so, I mean, that's a little stub of a, where a park is, right, that's, I have a question. It's on page twelve.
Which one are you saying is a, where a little car is taking?
Right, what, what, describe Ranger to me, to, you know, on page twelve, you're saying we're, street paving project amount of, for.
Yeah, that's east, east, it's OBE.
The little stub.
Yeah, so, I guess, I don't, is that on our list, and I don't understand why we spend money to?
Well, I think we.
pave Ranger.
It's on our, it's our list in our priority street, it's our priority, and, and that's what we've been going by.
That's the street itself, yeah.
Yeah, but, it's a little stub of a street, it's not really a, it's a parking lot, basically.
The racks on Powellville map.
But it extends.
Cause it used to be a street, because half, most of it's now in the water, that's. Yeah, and I know it's on the list, but I, I'm, I'm, I guess, I'm questioning the list, that priority of those.
Well, I mean, the, the, the priority, the priority of streets was a condition paving, um, assessment, and, I mean, it was, it was straight up, just how bad are the streets? And that, that Ranger Street is on our Powellville map, we do, it is included for maintenance purposes, we do get money for that, so, um, I mean, that's, and in our capital improvement plan, we've been going right down the list, is what we've been doing.
I'm gonna have to guess that the guy that looked at it didn't go down Boyd to Lois, where the middle of the intersection hasn't existed for a couple of years. It's completely gone, and it's a street, it's not a end of the sand dune, it's, it's an intersection of active streets, and it's not on the list?
I think Ranger falls in the, in, in the category of, hey, that's a unique situation, it used to be a street, yeah, it's on the maps, it's, it's a lot of things, but then now it's not a street. I think we should look at those unique situations and, and adjust that list.
Well, I think that started to pace me down about four years ago, fifty-five, took about my days, we were together, but, uh, on a yearly basis, you run just visit right there, if I notice you're gonna do something up today, and it looks good, I don't know, it's going like two years from now, you know, if you just follow that list. If it does help taking out the equation, the engineer with their streets, it's not pre-asset or whatever.
No, no, I'm not questioning you, I'm questioning the list, basically.
The Boyd, Boyd Street is on the list, and it looks like it would be in year three from now, if I'm just semi-wildly guessing on.
I, I, I would like to move Ranger down the list, how, how we wanna do that, we want, but, I, I can put it on the agenda, or we can, a, a future agenda?
Well, if you, everybody, I don't, I don't speak out of term, if everybody do as like, that, that rather not do around your street, I think so we go down the list and see if I can find something in that same category, as far as that size, I think we can still fill within that price tag.
I'm, I'm all for that, I, I think, I think we need to, you know, Ranger is, is a, is not a, in my mind, is not a street, I know it is technically, but it's a, it's a little stub of a parking lot, nobody drives down it except a park.
Those numbers, the, far as the street there, that come right off the plane, I mean.
I understand, I understand.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with it, like, you're setting up a problem, like, I see you can find something else, it's a case of operating.
That would be great by me.
If, if that's the board's consensus, this is a budget workshop, if y'all want, if y'all want to remove and replace it with something else, we can do that.
Okay.
So.
Okay, got you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chris.
Ready for sanitation?
But just, but just, but just realize that it, that, I think that's like eight thousand dollars or something, is that right, Ranger Street, if my.
Yeah, I know it's not big.
That, that the next suitable replacement might be ten thousand dollars, so you might have the opposite replace, so we'll, we'll go through it, and we might just have to take it all the way out.
But this, is this one you're gonna get reimbursed for though?
You, you don't get reimbursed on a one-for-one, you earn Powellville funds, and there's an appropriation. Our total Powellville, um, annual appropriation is in the thirty-three thousand dollar range for all, all our miles, yeah.
So we do, you have sanitation?
Yep. I only see two that pop out, and the contracted services, Chris? I see you adjusted, what is that, what is that for? You know, three-quarters of the way down?
Sanitation.
Sanitation, yeah.
Fifth from the bottom, one, two.
The, the new, the new budget is forty-five thousand, and you spent twenty thousand eight hundred fifty-nine, what's that for? What's that for?
I don't think, is that for the, 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 the contract?
What are you using it, what are you, what are you gonna, what do you anticipate spending forty-five thousand dollars for next budget?
Was that a portion of this?
I think it's, that's a portion of the contract.
I don't, I can't hear you.
Contract.
Yeah, I mean, please, isn't that part of the yard to be part of?
Maybe part of the yard, but just numbers don't add up to that, no.
Okay, you can get back, on this one, that.
What's? The blue can home recycling, i- is that not, is that not self-funded?
It, it is, the, the other, the other side, uh, on the revenue side, there's about a seventeen thousand dollar line item that, um, that I saw there, but yeah.
Okay.
That's good, thirty-four percent increase in blue can recycling. Good.
Okay.
I'm done with that.
And, and, and I know that there's a, there's a, there's a good reason for that contracted services line item that's tied to, um, trash, it, it just slips my mind here.
And also, you, sanitation's actually thirty-one thousand dollars, something like that now. Probably wasn't good before. So we did that some more, and that's, that's a perfect, oh.
Yep, yep.
A point of observation, David, your blue cans?
Most of the contract services, right?
Your blue cans across the street are public deposit spots. Lots of people are driving by and using it.
Yeah, we've been hiding that, um, yeah. Uh, one, one thing, um, that, that I know is probably in, in that contracted services line item, and Margaret tell me to be quiet. Is that the FY sixteen-seventeen budget had recycling in there. And so when we removed those recycling bins from over there, we saw corresponding decrease, I was thinking debris, yeah. So there's a, but, but there's a, there's another piece of that residual there too, that we'll, we'll, we'll articulate that better.
Same recycling, no, we don't, we didn't have to reinforce that sleeve, we take up, uh, here.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can see you're reducing it, but.
Um, I, I do wanna point out something that Chris brought my attention the other day. In sanitation, this is also where we run the vector control program, mosquito spraying program, out of this line, on sanitation.
I would like to see us look at the overall strategy of, of collection. To me, yard debris being funded and, and recycling not, just doesn't match up. That's, uh, we're paying for one service that is far less used than recycling. So, that's, that's a disconnect to me. In fact, in fact, recycling, to me, has much more environmental benefit, yet we're requiring citizens to pay, pay for the service. That's what I just heard, it's a net in, net out, and, and, uh, there's just a disconnect there. I know we've got a trial period, another year we're paying for yard debris, but, uh... And David, I'm not pointing to you, I'm, I'm not expecting you to figure it out, I'm just stating that, that we, we... Well, I guess I am saying I would like to hear back, what, you guys always have good suggestions, what should, how could we address that?
Well, we're, um, we, and we intend to bring, bring that, uh, back once we've got a year, a year's worth of data in. I mean, our, um, we've, we've got a spreadsheet that is insane on, um, as, as far as the fish bone and, and where everything is, is going. Um, anyway, but we wanted to get, at least get a, a year's worth of data in on, on that before bringing it back to the board. And we got, and we've got to get some users, some stakeholders involved in there.
I guess my, my cognizant dissonance is the recycling clearly has reduced, uh, generation of waste. Yet waste industries, they can't be hauling away the same volume of waste as they, uh, as it used to be before recycling. I mean, I typically hear, I know in our household, we generate probably eighty percent recycling to twenty percent waste. On a week-in, week-out basis. And I imagine for people who've got a blue can, similar, I mean... So waste industries, their contract doesn't factor in bulk dumped, apparently, it's strictly just trips to the island and collecting.
Yeah, uh.
There's something there that, it ought to be factored in on how much they're having to pay to dump it, but. Well, that's what doesn't make sense to me, that waste industries, I would expect that they, that when a truck goes to the dump, to dump trash, I would expect that they get charged per, by the tonnage.
I could be covering the wrong statement, right, man, but I think one time a great break, they made statements, they told them, well, get a, get a recyclable, it doesn't go.
Well, that may be the case, but I would challenge them on, okay, so what are you paying, well, I, I, I don't know, we, it's, something doesn't add up there. I think they are charged by tonnage that they have to dump of trash.
Well, the garbage, you know, they classify it as all this garbage, you put right straight in our land, people didn't, the recyclables, I think they're tricking it out of all these can or something, where, no.
Right, right, I understand that, they, I sure hope they are, cause, but, you know, the recycling is, that, that goes somewhere else. My point is, the, the more we recycle, the less waste we're producing, and I would think that waste industries is benefiting from that. Is there a way we can find out if they, if they are charged on a tonnage basis for waste that they, they dump? That would be interesting to s- to hear.
We, we can ask, I don't know if they'd be willing to answer, because now that, I mean, that's, that's their, their information.
All right.
I mean, we can ask.
Yeah, all right, can, can we, um, you, you brought up the subject of, uh, yard waste, are you having second thoughts of, of our decision to continue yard waste?
No, because I questioned the survey results. Uh, but there is a disconnect between us funding yard debris being removed, which is, in my, in my view, I think it would, we would all agree. We generate a whole lot more recyclables by volume than we do yard waste, yet we're paying for one and not the other.
Yeah, I'm not talking about, you know, quantities, I'm talking about, you know, one, recycling is a user fee, basically, if you want it, you pay for it.
That's my point.
And I proposed before that, that we kinda had a, that we treat waste, the yard waste the same, but we didn't.
Right, yeah, well, I proposed that too, at one point.
We decided not to go that way, we decided to push it a year with, with data.
I'm, I'm, we.
I, I, have we signed that contract, David?
Well, better than that, we've announced it and told people that they're gonna pick it up on Friday.
Okay, yep, thanks.
So my point is, I, I, I'm stating publicly, we do have a, there's, there's a disagreement in logic there that we need to look at.
And I think by the end of the year.
And I know the board decided to, to award a contract, but this board didn't do anything about the collection, I mean, about the, having to pay for recycling.
But we've asked that we collect data this year on usage of that yard pickup, and if at the end of the year, the number of people doesn't warrant the town putting something together, then each individual has to get their own collection scheme.
And we've, we've got some pretty good ideas on how, how to, um, collect that accurately, and also to, uh, uh, report it and to portray it. That I think will be self-explanatory.
Well, I tell, speaking of tracking, and we, I was, we know how many people are paying for recycling right now, right? I'd like to s, that would be a good comparison, in terms of usage. You know, just, just the number who use it, that's all we need for the blue cans. What's that?
On blue cans, it's a little over three hundred, it's right at three hundred. And that, and that number has a little bit of variation, and normally, at the, in the February-ish timeframe is when it's time to renew, cause some tail off, then they re-up it, but today.
Yeah, I know I re-upped in April, I think, it must be when you start it, or.
So if you, if you say, David, how many we got today, it's, it's about three hundred, but we could, we can get it actually, right in.
And plus, that's three hundred year-round, every two weeks. Okay.
So are we wrapped up? Anything else you wanna cover?
Um, I guess, I, there's, you know, the overall, I, I, I'd like to know what online, on page eighteen, the third one down, professional services. It's got fifty-seven, fifty-three thousand seven hundred dollars, and what, what was, and we did one-on-one, and we still have ten, what, what was that, what's that about? Is it pipe, the pipe testing? As well, cause sewer engine, you know, sewer consulting.
That's right, we did ultrasonic testing on the tanks. So that didn't come out of the professional services? The ultrasonic testing on the collection tanks didn't come out of professional services? Well, it must not have, cause it's only a hundred dollars, but it's spent so far.
So, yeah.
I believe this professional services line here is the, uh, professional services that goes with the, um, electrical and engineering work that we would need to pay for, um, the gin sets, on having those generator sets hooked up, I'd have to double-check. It's not, okay.
And we, so we haven't paid that bill yet?
We might have intended on that label, but I don't.
Okay.
So we haven't paid that bill yet, right?
We'll have to double-check.
Okay.
Okay, that, that, you're exactly right, that, that fifty, that fifty-three thousand dollars is, uh, forty thousand dollars of that is the McGillan Associates.
Right, that's right.
Yeah, we, 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 um, just haven't got the bill in for that.
Two, we might be able to point out, we just gotta figure out where we're gonna get it in the future, we're planning to do a line appropriations, stuff coming years from that too.
Yep, yes.
And just side statement, I've got a, I'll give a little bit of good news, somebody just whacked here, I'll give it, oh. In two years, we'll have a nice savings, it'll be about six hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in debt that we paid off, we actually hired sewer transmission lines. The year of the payment, the most two months, it'll be about six, seven, three, we got two more years together, and that'll be paid off, and I'll be zero, and we'll just be on, working on getting treatment plant, supply paid.
Yeah, we've got a lot of places to put that money.
Sand fund.
Can't spin water on sand, that's, you can't do that one.
David, does the city capital cost for the sewer, is that a twice-a-year payment?
There's a debt service payment, and then there's an interest payment.
Twice a year? So that's the other half coming?
Yep.
So, I mentioned the pipe testing, where is that listed, and how much is that?
I'm sorry?
Pipe testing, you know, the water pipe testing? Is that in, in next year's budget?
Oh, yeah, that's where we do, you do a, you do a random sample annually.
Yeah, how, how, uh, uh, how much was that? Do you plan on doing it next year?
That'll be the third year, right.
I would, I would rec, I would hope not.
Well, the, as I understood the test plan, they select different locations to sample, and some of those hadn't been sampled yet. You know, it's, it's.
Well, we said that in the beginning, we decided we were gonna do three consecutive years, and see what results showed.
But what, different locations?
Yes.
Different locations, and that actually took us two years to carry out one set of samples, the time we sent them, we got the results back, you know, we filled up for another year. But we've done two rounds, so, and either the two rounds, we had one sample, it showed, it did show good results, I think it was on the sand, under the sands, first tree. And with seven, I gave you a presentation, if we've done that again this year, I'm gonna take another sample, pretty close to that same area, and see if it's relative to soil conditions, or if it's just a bad piece of pipe or something, finish with the pieces of, of.
Yeah, I, my, that, that surprises me, cause I thought the results were, were very, very good, there's no.
Well, they were all good, but that one sample was showing the lowest life of the reef, or that's, that's what I.
Relative, you know, but relative, I mean, so was it, the other was ninety-nine percent good, and the other that was ninety-seven percent good, yeah?
Yeah, everybody, I can write the papers, and we read the rest right off the floor. All of them showed, the person didn't mean the number of years, number of years.
Right.
If you look at that particular piece of pipe, that particular piece of pipe there, had something like structural strength, the pipe showed ten times around, there's something, it was worse than the others. I mean, it's safe, it'll blow out next week or something, it may have been thirty, I think it was about thirty years' life, or something like that, I don't remember the specific, but it was a lot worse than the other five samples.
So, so that's my point, I mean, you don't do, you know, thirty years of life, you don't test every year.
Yeah, but what I was understanding is, we hadn't tested all the representative samples yet. We haven't gotten a, a collection of what we would say is a representative evaluation, is that what I'm saying?
We got twenty-one mile supplies, and it's, and it had an, and we had, we had seen six pieces of pipe, about eight foot long, that represented the whole island, it was starting to pass, I mean, that's just basically what it is.
It was different than like the collection tanks, we, you know, we sampled all of the tank, but these water pipes are all over the island, and they're different. I thought I'd heard there were different, uh, conditions that could affect.
Yeah, I'd like to see the schedule, so.
Whatever, something that's soil conditions and stuff like that, you can, you can, you can, you can.
This is, this is, this will be year three of a, of a three-year program.
Three-year program, and then we'd stop it for a number of years.
Evaluate.
Yeah, evaluate, and maybe not do it again in thirty years.
Makes sense to me, okay, thanks. So I think we got, I mean, one more, maybe, yeah, one more question, hopefully. They'll, transfer to general fund on page nineteen, two hundred and twenty-three thousand sixty-one dollars from, from the operating expenses, right? Where is that coming? From the water admin operating expenses?
What page you on?
Nineteen.
On page nineteen? Two, two hundred, last year, the, last year there was a budget of one-twenty, and now we've got a budget of two hundred and twenty-three thousand sixty-one.
Yeah, that's transferring to the fund, right?
No, this is expense.
This is going out to the general fund from this.
Transferring from this fund to the general fund.
Yeah.
From water and sewer.
Oh, I, I got you, I got you.
So, I guess, what, so.
Where's that going?
I know where it's going, but why, what's the explanation?
What's the intent, what's the intent of that transfer, that's a good question.
David, that's probably your question.
No, it's mine, um, um, that is probably not a completely accurate number at this moment, because what, when I was doing this, I was trying to get, see what it would take to balance the funds, to match the revenues. So I used them as a placeholder until we had this workshop, so we would know how to re-appropriate our expenses. So that's just sort of kind of a placeholder at this moment, um, so I could balance that fund, see what it would take to balance that one. But right now, it's just a placeholder until we finalize the numbers that you guys.
And does this fund normally transfer some balance at the end of the year back to the general fund?
Yeah, and, for, and for sure, there's a hard cost of the emergency operations center that is funded out of the general fund. That is, I mean, basically, that's a, that's a water and sewer building, but because of our, uh, the way that we financed it, it's gotta be out of the general fund.
And it'll probably be, I mean, there'll be a number there, and it'll probably be closer to, you know, but, you know, but.
Yeah, so you're.
It's not the same whenever we get it all organized.
So what we'd like to see is where, where that money is budgeted to be spent.
Where did that come from, from this, from the water and sewer?
Yeah, it comes from the water sewer.
Yeah, this is an expense from the water fund to the general fund, it shows up in the general fund as a revenue. And then the justification for that transfer is that there's at, at least a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that, um, is associated with the emergency operations center over there. Um, insurance, the debt service on the building, that kinda thing.
But, but, so if it goes to, and, I, I understand what you just said, so if it goes back to one-twenty, so you'll have another hundred and twenty, a hundred thousand?
Well, I'm, yeah.
Hold on, let me ask a question, but, so would that go into the, um, sewer fund?
It will go to the, the general fund.
General fund, this is a water expense, an expense from the water to the general.
You're taking it out from the water to the general, she just told me that it might go to one tw, uh, it won't be a hundred, it'll be one, two twenty-three, it'll be one, one twenty.
Yeah, and so right now, with the budgeted expenses that we have right now, that was the number that I raised. But that, but that's gonna change, probably, depending on what you guys want to do with the budget. But some money will go over to the general fund revenue to help pay for the expenses we have for the emergency operations.
But that's gonna be specifically linked to the center?
And it's gotta be justified, so, 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 you know, we just had a big meeting, and that we've got five and a half million dollars in front of us for water and sewer, right? So, and, so, I don't wanna, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to understand that we shouldn't move money from water and sewer, or, if, if, you can't justify it, right? It should be in the water and sewer, so we can, so we can pay for what we know is coming, that's... So we have a water and sewer fund that could go to instead of general fund, if you're just trying to balance, balance the numbers.
Well, everything has to equal zero, everything's gotta equal zero, but, um.
Yeah, but, well, but see, it could equal zero, back to my point about the sand fund, we could be designating funding for that, all right?
Or the water and sewer, that we know we gotta do a lot of.
Yeah, or water and sewer, in this case, yeah.
So, if he has to, does it, the money he's taking out of there, he's taking out of there for a specific reason, and, uh, associated with specific costs. Right. It's, it's not just taking it out of there to transfer it out of there, that's taking another fund to make the other fund go up. Right.
Well, we haven't heard that.
Well, I was just wondering, then, like the EOC, there's no other area that we've even talked about, EOC, is there? For debt retirement, or is it?
It's in the general fund, under governing body expenses.
Oh, uh, that's where it landed, okay. New EOC debt service.
So just the, you know, the direction, David, obviously, is what I just said, right? Um, we'd like to be really cognizant of the sewer and water fund, because of what we know what's in front of us.
Right.
Same, same as the B part. Okay. You good?
Are we done? Ken? Ken?
Do we, you wanna, people comment?
I have, I have a comment.
Yep.
The, um, one thing that's not in this budget is, um, the capital improvement plan is not, um, a draft of it. It's, and we have a working draft of that specifically to the lift station upgrades and we've got a report. One of the takedowns from the meeting the other night was a workshop of, for the, a further edification of what that sewer report, um, entails, what that means. The, um, Mr. Norton communicated a couple of dates. It's gonna be in May, later on, late May, I, I'll. Let me, let me say, let me say what I'm, it's gonna be after the budget message is due before, um, uh, it's like the nineteenth or twenty-sixth. I'll, I'll confirm that, just so I can eyeball it. Um, I've got a deliverable to y'all on May the fifteenth for a budget message. And what I propose to do, you can always not do what I propose, but what I propose to do is to, um, take the results of that study, um, working west to east and use the programming factors, uh, for those lift stations on a year-by-year basis and put an appropriation from fund balance out of the water and sewer fund that equals whatever that, like, million and a half dollar cost to do the first lift station and then sequen- sequentially, um, articulate that in the capital improvement program. And then whenever we get around to doing the budget, y'all can, y'all can redline however you want to, but I, but I need to put something in there um, just so that it'll communicate um, a placeholder or whatever the board's decision will, will fund. So, that we didn't do that for this, but that, I just wanted to tell y'all what, what I'm gonna do. Don't be surprised at it. So, we're gonna work west to east and, um,
One a year?
However, one a year and however, however that works out. So, generally speaking, that's what I plan to, plan to do. We, and we hadn't put that on paper anywhere yet, that's.
So, is that implementing recommendation two?
Yes.
From the study?
That's, that's what, that's what, um, it would be. And then if we went with recommendation three, it would just make the numbers bigger. Or if it was something else, it would, anyway.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I wanted to.
I agree, I agree.
Just to tell y'all that.
And I was gonna get with Heather, um, we, we, we do need to make a date, right? I mean.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me look that up real quick for you.
And, and while you do that, David, um, I know you, you got the note from Mike Sullivan related to that?
Yes, we, we, we need to talk about the, um, one, I need to check the contract
Yep.
on whether or not, um, that's, that's doable. Two, we need to consider the appropriateness of that because the board hired the consultant and I don't know what you had in mind as far as some type of workshop, but I'm not sure that it's appropriate to have, to have hired a consultant to give you a deliverable that may or may not be in the apposition in concordance with, uh, somebody else. I don't know if that's, that's appropriate to ask that of the, of, of, uh,
Yep, we need to look at that.
Of McGill.
Yeah.
So, but McGill could be the same.
I have some reservations about it, too.
Yeah, but McGill could be doing the s- they're giving themselves a presentation as well, so you can look at that, too, so.
They what?
Forget it. Yeah, we could talk about it.
Yeah.
Ashley, you have anything else?
Uh, no, I don't. Christie's.
Anybody in the audience have a comment, observation, anything to add or?
Tom Christie may have something for us before.
Christie does, yeah.
Yeah, they still don't want to get in trouble with the boss man when I walk out, cause he told me to put a note in the folder, Terri, and I just flipped that through my folder. So, I know that you guys are looking at cutting B card expenses, but I'll just say that if, um, we should, there did a little bit of discussion, discussion at B O C meetings the past couple of months about Columbia's or not Columbia's, that if that's a path you tend to think you want to go down, the appropriate line for the B card budget would be professional services and that's not currently included. So, there's just a note, just say that and bring that to your attention and we will hold some there.
Good point.
Thanks.
Nineteenth or twenty-sixth is what, um, Mr. Norton has, has suggested. Um, and Heather, I don't know the proper way to do that. This is a budget workshop and that's a single kind of thing. What, what Heather's the rule keeper here, but.
Well, it's part of the budget if you ask me because you had, no, cause I need to know what to put in the budget. I think it's, if you wanna, if you wanna give me dates, then the executive secretary and I can work firm on those outside of the meeting, but yes, I think giving me dates is pretty important.
Okay.
So, we're in May and what's?
Nineteenth or twenty-sixth. This Michael says, will a nineteenth or twenty-sixth be okay for the workshop? If you just wanna provide that.
Yeah, twenty-sixth is no good for me.
Nineteenth works best for me.
Works best for me, too.
Yeah, I pencil in nineteenth right now.
Can we, can we, uh,
We'll confirm that.
Solicit the mayor to also.
We can solicit, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we should, cause.
And then, um, have.
Get back to Heather.
What time are we talking about the nineteenth?
Kind of ten in the morning?
Nine.
Nine.
Nine. I'm on ATV that morning. Can I get back there? So, no turtles are allowed to lay in that morning?
Yep.
Okay.
You'll be off by seven-thirty. And this is a s- this is.
Workshop.
Yep.
Based on that sewer report, sewer vulnerability assessment.
And is McGill gonna be here?
They said they.
Michael.
Well, Michael, yeah.
Michael Norton, yeah.
That's right.
Whoever's on his team.
Got it.
So, Lou, any comments, observation? No? Okay, staff?
I think we got plenty to work, yeah.
Okay. No, the board recognizes the challenges that we have right now, but we're also really working hard to make sure we're not wasting any money or that we're managing it the, the best we can for the people. Trying to avoid raising taxes. Have a motion to adjourn?
So, a motion to adjourn?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Yeah, good.